Good morning, this is a delegate Nota, I'm on the line.
Delegate Nota, this is Delegate Charles New and I'm also on the line.
Good deal.
See outside, it's basically recording.
Yeah, we have all the different cameras that can take over anything.
Robert, talk about phones and all of them.
2381, I don't know if I've been done.
See that's, that's where it goes back.
Well, I thought you had to go to the other side.
Yeah, turn it back the other way. Yes, it's on right here. See right here, I can see.
Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President, the Honorable Madam President.
Present.
Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President is present. Honorable Sean Anne Clark. Honorable Sean Anne Clark. Honorable Sean Anne Clark, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Senator McNess, the Honorable Senator. 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 Honorable Senator McNess, the Honorable Senator is present. Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President, the Honorable Madam President.
How many participants are on here? Only just a few, right? 65.
Honorable Senator, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President is present. Honorable Senator Allen Johnson. Honorable Senator Allen Johnson. Honorable Senator Allen Johnson, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Senator Henry Davis. Honorable Senator Henry Davis, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Wade Nair.
Everybody's on mute.
Honorable Wade Nair.
Delegate Rick Nair is on the call.
Honorable Wade Nair, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President.
Here.
Honorable Madam President, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Sean Anne Clark.
I'm present.
Honorable Sean Anne Clark, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Danny Simpson. Honorable Danny Simpson is present. Honorable Paul Slater. Honorable Paul Slater, the Honorable Senator. Honorable Wade Nair.
I'm present, thank you.
Honorable Wade Nair, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Senator Lee. Honorable Senator Lee. Honorable Senator Lee, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Senator Lee, the Honorable Senator. Honorable Senator Lee, the Honorable Senator. Honorable Senator Lee, the Honorable Senator. Honorable Senator Lee, the Honorable Madam President. Koi gaita? Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President, the Honorable Madam President.
Honorable Helena has the gates online, present.
Honorable Madam President, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Sean Anne Clark.
Sean Anne Clark, present, thank you.
Honorable Sean Anne Clark, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Senator McNess, the Honorable Senator. Honorable Senator McNess, the Honorable Senator. Honorable Senator McNess, the Honorable Senator. Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Senator Lee. Honorable Senator Lee, the Honorable Senator. Honorable Wade Nair. Honorable Wade Nair. Honorable Wade Nair, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Senator Allen Johnson. Honorable Senator Allen Johnson, the Honorable Senator. Honorable Madam President. Honorable Madam President, the Honorable Senator. Honorable Senator Lee. Honorable Senator Lee. Honorable Senator Lee, the Honorable Madam President. Honorable Senator Lee. Honorable Senator Lee, the Honorable Madam President. Madam Speaker, we have 15 members present. And three are silent.
Thank you, Honorable Senator. The Honorable Madam President, the Honorable Madam President. Although the vote is a 15 questions from a vote for an issue made on the vote table. We call the meeting to order at 10:17 a.m. Although, we have also a committee, a special committee, the Honorable Madam President. So, they have a vote, a vote for each, uh, another, there is a vote, a vote in. So, a quality speaker online, despite making key conversations to the general, uh, adoptable, uh, who then, uh, could be trying to pick up a few of the, uh, a young, it's a, uh, although, quite a long, uh, so again, we've gone after, so, but all, yeah, uh, if they're early, uh, my reason, uh, for the, 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 uh, 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 uh,
Uh, see, it's, uh, it's, uh, 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 although, uh, the, uh, 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 so, if the, uh, 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 uh,
Delegate RB so online.
Uh, 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 uh,
Council Delegate, I'm Daniel Junior. Good morning.
Uh, 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 uh,
Uh, actually, I have to go, uh, to the, uh, 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 uh,
As executive staff assistant. This is Vicki Shirley. Have just been a tremendous help to our community in coordinating the efforts. So I just wanted to say that. Bottom speaker and thank you for the support from the office of the speaker as well. And then also to the legislative branch and also the judicial branch for allowing the emergency command center to be set up at the Chinley Judicial Complex. So we are very thankful for all of the donations that people are bringing in. And last night, we had Fox News that was out in our community. We had the reporter come out and interview many of our residents as well as our Navajo Nation leadership. So I just want to thank everyone and take time to recognize all of those individuals that played a really critical role in mitigating the floods. We also had community members who were doing their own rescue, who brought out their kayaks and they were putting sandbags on the kayaks as well as food and water. And then also to the school district for working with the families. Many families were isolated. The floodwaters created islands where people were, they had to shelter in place. So we are very thankful for all of the assistance. And we are still dealing with the waters this morning. We understand there's another breach in the berm. And right now we have three berms that were constructed, but with the snow melt and the precipitation from the winter, we are very thankful for that. However, the course of the water has run into our residents and right along the Cottonwood Wash. That wash area, I think social media people are calling it Jurassic Park. So that's where a lot of our families are affected. So. So I will go ahead and turn it back over to you, Shidaeja, Speaker Curly.
Yeah, good morning, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you. Kodo nagai to NTUA, Kodo Navajo Travel Utility Authority, Kodo Ki'anta District. I see here, Kodo, when she got a guy, he can't do it. Ah, just District Manager, Lynn G., Cynthia Charlie, Kodo, she did it. Ah, just Kodo, but sometimes let's keep, oh, yeah, the dish, Kodo. Ah, don't, Kodo, Kedna, how this is Kodo, nagai, oh, then, I can't, that, Kodo. Utility companies from the outside, eh, Kodo, nagai, the, yeah, Katan, the, NTUA, Katan, that, yeah. So, Kaka, Keho, just, eh, yeah, Light Up Navajo Four, eh, Kegi, eh, yeah, that, in, they, she, Kodo. I just want to say thank you to all the utility companies. They came, they came onto the reservation assisting the Navajo Travel Utility Authority, Kodo. A Kodo, Kodo, nagai, um, I just want to say thank you to Grand River Dam Authority from Oklahoma. Ah, don't, none, nagai, um. Spanish Fort Power and Light, eh, from Utah. Ah, don't, none, nagai, Sacramento Municipal Utility District, eh, nagai, California. Ah, and the Roseville Utility from California. Ah, the Greenville Utility Commission from North Carolina. Eh, did, oh, oh, yeah, but he need, oh, let's, Kodo. Ah, don't, Kodo, nagai, um, the, nah, I think, so, I don't, but, eh, don't, nah, the, eh, Kodo, so, so, Kodo. So, eh, I see, Kodo, the, the, Kha, eh, she, eh, yeah, nagai, um, oh, Jito, eh, nagai, um. They're in Ojito area right now. I have one of the, a big project out there, nagai, um, Halke'oto Power Line. Eh, what I, that, you, so, nagai, Ojito. Ah, don't, nah, nagai, Halke'oto Power Line is around Forest Camp Hill. Forest Camp Hill, eh, ah, eh, that, in, they, she, Kodo, eh, towards Mexican Hat. Ah, don't, nah, nagai, um, north and south of, um, Forest Camp Hill, eh, what, eh, Kodo. So, nagai, the power, gee, nagai, it's all overhead, eh, they, they, Kodo. But, nagai, um, because of the scenery, some of these areas have to be underground. Power, gee, nagai, especially, gee, has to be underground because of the scenery. But, because it, I, this, gee, overhead, it's away from the, it's away from the scenery, even, nah. So, eh, they, yeah, oh, yeah, they need, oh, let's, ah, don't, nah, Kodo, nagai, um. The hand down, they should, Kodo, but, but, they, they should, Kodo, nagai, but, when, nah. They, District, eh, oh, yeah, but, they need, oh, let's, all, all the legislative district assistants. Then, Lynn G., yeah, then, Kago, ah, don't, nah, Kodo, the, Mr. Elsie Small Canyon, Kodo, my, LD eight, oh, yeah, Kodo. Nagai, to Kana, to, oh, huh, Zaho, or, just, ah, don't, nah, Kodo, the board chapters. Um, that I represent, chapter officials, Kana, well, and Lynn G., ah, don't, nah, nagai, um. Uh, Benan, ah, that, eh, gee, Club C, ah, don't, nah, subcommittees. Eh, I just want to say thank you, ah, don't, nah, yeah, oh, the, oh, the, oh, thank you very much, Madam Chair, thank you.
We have Honorable Vice Chair Jermaine Simonson.
Oh, yeah, it's, eh, good morning, that, that, she, the, she. Oh, I go, she, I don't, yeah, um, Madam Speaker, uh, Ms. Curly, yeah, Kaden, shut, Dean, on, again. Although, uh, the, uh, members of Twenty-Fifth Navajo Nation Council, uh, the, the, I saw, Chinese, and, uh.
Everybody have a safe travel.
Iha ha, shima kodo, Honorable Helena Nez Begay. Uh, any more comments or any more recognizing guests and visiting officials? Honorable colleagues?
Honorable Yanito.
Uh, do shi'aj, uh, Honorable Yanito. Oko she, oh, shi'aj akaditza, and if you're using two devices, can you put one on mute? There is an echo on our end. Honorable Yanito.
Rockville, Maryland. Are kodo, Samsung. Eh, but son, shenwa de. I would, I would appreciate it if I was there. A call. Oh, hein, the dish, ni's don't be legislation, shahol, jeez, she, ah, the she, shka na do, cha. Ah, don da, di de, ko ba, sa ni, tlini gi eh. Atsis, na, ganegi, oh, you, beni chi, nahotki. Di inlen, yin sa, case, and, wa da, da ho, ah, ah, don, hits isu da, tani da. As ze, sina, ichta ni da, ni he'as chena, oh, you, yinakha, do ba'ahu, n'san, dan de la, a call. Di eh, ya beni chi nahotki, di de, nebe na'se, oba ka, da, ashko. Ah, ro'sa, na'sh, so, dan, leni da, ah, don, na, nish. Di de, so, na, dan, leni da, ah, ro ze, ni, ka, da, teh. Ah, ro da, ti, gah, go, oh, you, de, na eh, ya, pechi nahotki, oh, tela. A call di beda, nishid, oh, you, go eh, di, aish, esu da, tani be, yen, da, nish. A ko, pansa, the case, so, ala, eh, di, ho, tela, tins, so, eh, pansa, the case, it, oh, you, go bedi, tahan, nek, koda. A call, ita, hui, la, ah, ah, ro, eh, di de, President Boo Niderin. Eh, eh, yes, la, n'se, zo, eh, koda. Ashla, leho, de, ya, ned, obabi, gar, zed, leno, beni na, eh, ah, re, she'la. As an alternate. A call, di ben nachi, pansa, case, it, oh, you, eh, ala, eh, di, ko, bes, on, da, eh, di, ah. Atsis be, ba, ha, ya, ro, le, shna'sh, ala, eh, chew, do, inla, ala, eh, chew, de, di, inla. So, da, tani, ye, eh, pansa, case, ben nachi, a call di, ashla, teen. Oh, n'shaj, ha, da, ha, is, so, di, oh, you, ya, da, eh, la. A ko, he, ah, chew, berser, eh, ni, ilte, esh, tis, ni, tlini gi. A ko, he, eh, do, un, he, da, eh, to, zahat, ah, don, ni, be, bes, on, da, eh, di, ah, eh, di. To eh, any, ban, eh, chag, it, chink, ah, koda. But di, eh, ya, the last day, in de, ashla, oh, all, ki, lo, she, it's, ko, mirin, do, le, koda. Ah, don, da, she, is, ka, she, ah, na'sh, da, do, le. Ah, don, da, kuda, shahol, jeez, she, kuda, shanar, da, to, ash. Oh, eh, go, eh, oh, kudo, ya, eh, ni, di, ni, do, le. She, ta, ash, chen, shle, kura, chi, ni, basis, chen, ka, nes, sa, nash, chen, che. To, pa, ta, shen, na, la, ah, eh, ah, no, shoda, is, no, shsa, eh, eh, ro, ta, yin, na, le, gi. Eh, do, oh, hein, ni, di, ni, do, le. Iha ha.
Iha ha, shi'aj, kodo, Honorable Yanito. Ah, de, eh, shto, la, hananatsi, ita, for recognizing guests and visiting officials. Second call. Third call, thank you colleagues, kodo, injunako, ha, ta, hasaw, zi, iki. Ah, do, na'sh, na, hold, just, to, le, uh, number three, review and adopt the agenda. Kodo, his staff, dan, leni gi, uh, kodo, uh, agenda, teh, ki, ni, he, chen, eh, do, ta. Uh, we'll have our staff read the, our agenda, our proposed agenda into the record.
Good morning, staff. Madam Speaker and participating audience, this is the agenda for the N'abiki'atik Committee of the Navajo Nation, Twenty-Fifth Navajo Nation Council. This is a regular meeting. Location, Na'yezi Navajo Nation, New Mexico. Na'yezi Multi-Use Purpose Center, 11553 US 550, Na'yezi, New Mexico, 87037. Today's date is Thursday, April 27, 2023, 10 o'clock AM. Proposed agenda, Presiding Chair, Honorable Kristalyn Curly, Speaker, Twenty-Fifth Navajo Nation Council. One, call meeting to order, roll call invocation. Two, recognize guests and visiting officials. Three, review and adopt agenda. Four, review and adopt the journals, there is none. Five, receive reports, none. Six, old business, none. Seven, new business. A, Legislation 0082-23. New Business B is Legislation 0086-23. Eight, close a meeting, announcements and adjournment, Madam Speaker.
Iha ha, kodo, injunako, hanin, ka, uh, agenda. Colleagues, we do have the, read the agenda into the record, do we have a motion? Motion by Chair Brenda Jesus, uh, do, yeket, ni, ha, kishna, uh, Norman Begay, Honorable Norman Begay. Any comments on the questions, ah, do, kodo, uh, Honorable Danny Simpson?
Uh, Iha ha, Madam Speaker, all of members of the N'abiki'atik Committee. Ya, te, bena, ki, di, she, ah, de, no, shsa, no, ya, te, bena, do, ah, eh, chi, ke, chne, ah, eh, case, so, ke, uh, ya, te, bena, ki, di, she, di. Uh, lo, shada, hanos, ni, she, Danny Simpson, she, uh, baseball, uh, ni, she, no, di, ka, eight chapters, ba, na'shka. Uh, Hurfalo, Na'yezi, White Rock, Lake Valley, Vicente, Crown Point, now, di, she, is, in, Staney Rock, ah, ba, na'shka, do. Ya, ko, na'shka, ha, na, di, na'shka, uh, kura, chi, ni, shle, na, shashe, basis, uh, kura, chi, ni, shashe, basis, che, na, shashe, da, shna, da, he, na'sh, che. Do, hein, na, di, di, do, uh, bena, ya, te, bena, ki, di, she, di, eh, ka. Uh, my colleagues, uh, N'abiki'atik Committee membersi. Uh, Madam Speaker, di, ka, agenda, ba, eh, eh, te, da, she, ba, eh, do, so, da, he, di, she, ki, di, de, Legislation, based, on, di, ni, da, she, ba, eh, do, so, di, eh, se, ko, ne. Uh, wa, ha, no, ti, li, di, de, Legislation, di, ka, ah, ba, eh, te, buffer zone, di, ne, land withdrawal, around the Chaco National Park, di, ne. Ah, di, adana, di, de, Resource Development Committee, ita, ni, so, is, di, de, eh, yir, landa, as, ni, eh, de. A call, di, de, N'abiki'atik Agenda had to be posted 24 hours prior to the meeting. A call, di, de, but, uh, Resource Development Committee, San, eh, baseball, uh, eh, ba, adana, twelve, kli, landa, as, ni, eh, de. So, eh, di, ka, agenda, be, to, you, to, ah, be, gas, ni, da, di, de. A call, ah, in she, ki, oh, di, de, amendment to the agenda, uh, tiso, uh, in, do, kasi, di, de, agenda, so. The, uh, Madam Speaker, I'd like to add Legislation, uh, tracking number 0076-23. Uh, in action relating to Resource Development and N'abiki'atik Committees rescinding Resolution NABJA, NABIJA, dash, 05, dash, 20. Opposing HR 2181 and S 1079, the Chaco Heritage Area Protection Act of 2019. Until such time as the buffer zone surrounding Chaco Cultural National Historical Park is reduced to five miles. I were, uh, opposing the withdrawal of approximately 351,000 acres of public land surrounding Chaco Canyon. And I believe the staff did bring hard copies for the, for the N'abiki'atik Committee members, auto, I believe they were emailed to, hopefully, they were emailed to the, uh, N'abiki', all the, uh, N'abiki'atik Committee members. So, da, in she, ki, a motion, she, uh, Madam Speaker, Iha ha.
Uh, Mr. Toth, second.
Oh, Iha ha, kodo, um, Honorable Danny Simpson, eh, you had the snob to add on Legislation 0076-23. Ah, do, ko, ne, eh, staff, ah, ho, dish, ah, to read that legislation to the record.
Legislation 0076-23, in action relating to the Resource and Development and N'abiki'atik Committees rescinding Resolution NABIJA, dash, 05, dash, 20. Opposing HR 2181 and S 1079, the Chaco Heritage Area Protection Act of 2109. Until such time as the buffer zone surrounding Chaco Cultural National Historical Park is reduced to five miles. Opposing the withdrawal of approximately 351,000 area, acres of public land surrounding Chaco Canyon. This legislation had a five-day comment period which started on April 14. And ended on April 19 with a due pass from the Resource and Development Committee and move forward to the N'abiki'atik Committee, Madam Speaker.
Iha ha, staff, kodo, injunako, Legislation, hanin, ka. Uh, do, ko, ne, eh, Honorable George Toth, eh, yeket, ni, ya. So, we do have a motion and a second to add the legislation to the agenda. Kodo, uh, eh, shba, da, sa, an, eh, slash, to, na, do, kida, on this amendment to the agenda.
Madam Chair, this is the delegate Daniel.
Kodo, shi'aj, uh, Honorable Daniels.
Um, yeah, um, thank you, kodo, shima, kodo, Madam Chair, Iha ha, ah, eh, da, kodo, N'abiki'atik Committee. Uh, do, to the motioning parties, kodo, n'eta, to the amendment, kodo, n'eta. Um, modification of the, this, he, this, case, in point, kodo, n'eta, to include a report. From, um, Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission Office. Um, eh, uh, it's gonna be under reports, off table, so, iti, eh, thank you.
Ah, do, kodo, Iha ha, Miss, Honorable Daniels, uh, we'll give the floor back to our motioning party. Kodo, uh, you had the snob, eh, Honorable Delegate Simpson, if he would modify that request.
Uh, Iha ha, Madam Speaker, all of members of the N'abiki'atik Committee, uh, again, eh, bena, di, she, nap, kesh, uh, she, brother, ni, di, ki, di, ash, shabiz, oh, nigo. Uh, Mr., uh, Honorable Delegate Herman Daniels. Uh, Madam Speaker, uh, I do concur with Mr. Daniels. But I'd like to know if the Human Rights Commission is ready to give a report, if they have all the doc, I mean, all the information to give report. On this issue that Mr. Honorable Delegate Herman Daniels is asking for. If they're, if they have all the report ready, go, to give to N'abiki'atik, I'll concur with Honorable Delegate Herman Daniels, uh, Madam Speaker.
Ah, do, ko, ne, eh, Iha ha, Honorable Simpson. Uh, we did have our staff reach out to Human Rights, uh, Commission, uh, earlier this week, however, they, uh, asked, request for, to extend at least another week. For them to do the proper intake of the, of any complaints. And then they will have a full report for us, um, so they did request, uh, the Executive Director for either, um, a special report. Or tell them the next N'abiki'atik on May 11th, eh, kota, ni, chen, tahol, ne.
Madam Chair, this is our delegate Daniel.
Kodo, shi'aj, Honorable Daniels.
Um, yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, um, with that, uh, information. And that we received from Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission Office. I'll go ahead and withdraw my request, so, iti, eh, um, thank you, Madam Chair. Ah, do, na, kodo, n'eta, I would really appreciate, um, um, kodo, n'eta, to have a, an update report from, um, Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission Office. Regarding, um, school, yeah, throughout the Navajo Nation, right now, to, n'eta, graduation, ba, da, we, she, is, on, eh, promotion. I've been, host, chen, bit, chen, da, iti, eh, ita, so, iti, eh, uh, thank you, thank you.
Oh, Iha ha, ah, de, shi'aj, behenzi, ki, she, eh, kodo, tskilop, uh, plant, da, di, nesh, to do either a special meeting or on May 11th, do, le. And we did reach out to the Human Rights Commission that, uh, that request will be forthcoming. Ah, do, ko, ne, eh, shto, la, na, do, kida, on the amendment to amend our agenda. Second call. Third call. Kodo, eh, she, uh, bandit, di, ja, uh, vote for amendment number one on the agenda. Uh, we will do a roll call vote, jo, kodo, um, ah, la, an, ha, is, te, to, do, na, eh, ha, jo, ha, di, zat, da. So, well, staff, could you help us do the roll call vote?
Honorable Steven Arvisto.
Green.
Honorable Steven Arvisto votes green. Honorable Lamardo Azaret.
Green.
Honorable Lamardo Azaret votes green. Honorable Helena Nez Begay.
I vote green, thank you.
Honorable Helena Nez Begay votes green. Honorable Norman Begay. Honorable Norman Begay votes green. Honorable Shawna Anclaw. Honorable Shawna Anclaw votes green. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton did not vote. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacroti. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacroti. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacroti did not vote. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr. votes green. Honorable Seth Damon is excused. Honorable Benj James. Honorable Benj James. Honorable Benj James did not vote. Honorable Brenda Jesus. Honorable Brenda Jesus votes green. Honorable Casey Allen Johnson is excused. Honorable Dr. Andy Ness. Honorable Dr. Andy Ness votes green. Honorable Rick Ness. Honorable Rick Ness votes green. Honorable Nathan Nota.
Green.
Honorable Nathan Nota votes green. Honorable Shandine Parrish. Honorable Shandine Parrish votes green. Honorable Jermaine Simmison votes green. Honorable Danny Simpson. Honorable Danny Simpson votes green. Honorable Carl Slater is excused. Honorable George Toth.
Green, ma'am.
Honorable George Toth votes green. Honorable Otto So is excused. Honorable Curtis Yanito votes green. Honorable Sherilyn Yasi. Honorable Sherilyn Yasi. Honorable Sherilyn Yasi did not vote, going back up. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton did not vote. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacroti. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacroti. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacroti did not vote. Honorable Benj James. Honorable Benj James. Honorable Benj James did not vote. Honorable Sherilyn Yasi. Honorable Sherilyn Yasi. Honorable Sherilyn Yasi did not vote. Madam Speaker, with a vote of fourteen, um, excuse me, fifteen in favor for opposed, Madam Speaker not voting.
Iha ha, staff. We do have fifteen in favor for opposed, although Speaker not voting. So, the Legislation 0076-23 is added to our agenda. Ah, do, ko, ne, eh, shto, la, hananatsi, ita, regarding the review and adoption of our agenda, colleagues. Second call, Honorable Simpson.
I can't, not, Madam Speaker, though, uh, the, uh, members of the N'abiki'atik Committee. Uh, I can't, I could, she, da, de, no, shsa, no, eh, is, okay. Uh, Madam Speaker, I'd like to make it, I should have done this during the regular amendment, but, uh, my second amendment will be for Legislation 0082-23. And sponsored by Honorable Delegate Percy Nito, I'd like to put that under consent. Agenda. On this legislation, uh, I believe we had done that to all, all the, most of the, uh, their regional projects, eh, tega, eh, da. So, we'll consent agenda, be, to, 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 a motion, she, uh, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Ah, do, ko, ne, eh, Iha ha, Honorable Simpson, here is a motion to do consent agenda for Legislation 0082-23. Eh, do we have a second?
Mr. Toth.
Second by Honorable Toth. Ah, do, shto, la, na, ba, da, kida, are there any questions, comments on the consent agenda? Second call. Third call. Colleagues, we go to roll call vote for consent agenda.
Honorable Steven Arvisto.
Votes green.
Honorable Steven Arvisto votes green. Honorable Lamardo Azaret.
Green.
Honorable Lamardo Azaret votes green. Honorable Helena Nez Begay. Honorable Helena Nez Begay.
Green.
Honorable Helena Nez Begay votes green. Honorable Norman Begay. Honorable Norman Begay. Honorable Norman Begay votes green. Honorable Shawna Anclaw. Honorable Shawna Anclaw votes green. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton did not vote, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton did not vote. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacroti. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacroti. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacroti did not vote. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr. votes green. Honorable Seth Damon is excused. Honorable Benj James. Honorable Benj James. Honorable Benj James did not vote. Honorable Brenda Jesus. Honorable Brenda Jesus votes green. Honorable Casey Allen Johnson is excused. Honorable Dan, Dr. Andy Ness. Honorable Dr. Andy Ness. Honorable Dr. Andy Ness votes green. Honorable Rick Ness. Honorable Rick Ness. Honorable Rick Ness did not vote. Honorable Nathan Nota.
Green.
Honorable Nathan Nota votes red. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Honorable Nathan Nota votes green.
Yes, green.
Honorable Shandine Parrish. Honorable Shandine Parrish votes green. Honorable Jermaine Simmison. Honorable Jermaine Simmison votes green. Honorable Danny Simpson. Honorable Danny Simpson votes green. Honorable Carl Slater is excused. Honorable George Toth.
Ah, do, green.
Honorable George Toth votes green. Honorable Otto So is excused. Honorable Curtis Yanito votes green. Honorable Sherilyn Yasi. Honorable Sherilyn Yasi. Honorable Sherilyn Yasi did not vote, going back up. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton did not vote. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacroti. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacroti. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacroti did not vote. Honorable Benj James. Honorable Benj James. Honorable Benj James did not vote. Honorable Rick Ness. Honorable Rick Ness. Honorable Rick Ness did not vote. Honorable Sherilyn Yasi. Honorable Sherilyn Yasi. Honorable Sherilyn Yasi did not vote. Madam Speaker with a vote of fourteen in favor, zero opposed, and Madam Speaker not voting.
Iha ha, kodo, staff, we do have fourteen in favor, zero opposed, and Speaker not voting on the consent agenda. Ah, do, na'sh, na, hold, just, to, le, we are still on number three, review and adopt the agenda, ah, do. You'd snob, eh, kodo, Honorable Simpson, ah, do, yeket, ni, ha, ki, eh, kodo, shu, che, Honorable Toth. Or Honorable Norman Begay, eh, ah, do, kodo, you'd snob, eh, Honorable Jesus. Do, la, na, do, kida, na, na, on the agenda. Colleagues, are there any additional comments or questions to the agenda? Second call. Third call, we're going to vote to review, to adopt our agenda for today. Uh, staff, help us with their roll call vote. Oh, kodo, eh, eh, uh, we'll have our staff do the second reading of our agenda. Don, junako, hanina, ne, do, ta.
Amendment one is to add Legislation 0076-23. And Amendment two is to do a consent agenda for Legislation 0082-23, Madam Speaker.
Iha ha, kodo, injunako, hanan, in, ka, uh, do, ko, ne, uh, colleagues, go to a roll call vote to adopt our agenda.
Honorable Steven Arvizo.
Green.
Honorable Steven Arvizo votes green. Honorable Lamardo Azaret. Honorable Lamardo Azaret. Honorable Lamardo Azaret did not vote. Honorable Helena Nez Bega.
Green.
Honorable Helena Nez Bega votes green. Honorable Norman Bega. Honorable Norman Bega votes green. Honorable Shawna Ann Claw. Honorable Shawna Ann Claw votes green. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton did not vote. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi did not vote. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr. votes green. Honorable Seth Damon is excused. Honorable Vince James. Honorable Vince James. Honorable Vince James did not vote. Honorable Brenda Jesus. Honorable Brenda Jesus votes green. Honorable Casey Allen Johnson is excused. Honorable Doctor Andy Nez. Honorable Doctor Andy Nez votes green. Honorable Rick Nez. Honorable Rick Nez. Honorable Rick Nez votes green. Honorable Nathan Nota.
Green.
Honorable Nathan Nota votes green. Honorable Shandine Parrish. Honorable Shandine Parrish votes green. Honorable Jermaine Simonson. Honorable Jermaine Simonson votes green. Honorable Danny Simpson. Honorable Danny Simpson votes green. Honorable Carl Slater is excused. Honorable George Tolt.
I vote green, ma'am.
Honorable George Tolt votes green. Honorable Otto So is excused. Honorable Curtis Yanito votes green. Honorable Sherlin Yasi. Honorable Sherlin Yasi. Honorable Sherlin Yasi did not vote, going back up. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton did not vote. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi did not vote. Honorable Vince James. Honorable Vince James. Honorable Vince James did not vote. Honorable Sherlin Yasi. Honorable Sherlin Yasi. Honorable Sherlin Yasi did not vote. Madam Speaker with a vote of fourteen in favor, zero opposed, and Madam Speaker not voting.
Lamardo votes green.
For the record, Honorable Azaret votes green, so that moves the vote to fifteen in favor, zero opposed, and Speaker not voting. So with colleagues, we do have an adopted agenda. A reminder to silence your phones. There is echo in this auditorium, so if you could, please keep your conversations to minimal and to silence your phones. Ado Canes Nana, number four. Review and adopt their journals, there's none. Islaagone Nana, receive reports, none. Number six, old business, none. Number seven, new business. A is a consent agenda, legislation zero zero eight two dash two three. Staff, could you help us read the consent agenda into the record?
Legislation zero zero eight two dash two three. An action relating to Navajiahtit Committee and Navajo Nation Council. Approving the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Fund, Fund Delegate Region Project Plan for Honorable Curtis Yanito's delegate region. Chapters include Mexican Water, Twolacan, Tisnasmas, Aneth, and Red Mesa. The sponsor is Honorable Curtis Yanito, Madam Speaker.
Here, staff, Kodo Juna, Kona, Nani, Keta. Do we have a motion? Motion by Honorable Simpson. Second.
Mr. Tolt.
Second by Honorable Tolt. And we do not have a debate on consent agenda, so colleagues will go straight to a vote on the consent agenda. Staff, could you help us with a roll call vote? Honorable Steven Arvizo. Honorable Steven Arvizo. Honorable Steven Arvizo. Honorable Steven, Honorable Steven Arvizo votes green. Honorable Lamardo Azaret.
Green.
Honorable Lamardo Azaret votes green. Honorable Helena Nez Bega.
Green.
Honorable Helena Nez Bega votes green. Honorable Norman Bega. Honorable Norman Bega votes green. Honorable Shawna Ann Claw. Honorable Shawna Ann Claw votes green. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton votes green. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi did not vote. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr. votes green. Honorable Seth Damon is excused. Honorable Vince James. Honorable Vince James. Honorable Vince James did not vote. Honorable Brenda Jesus. Honorable Brenda Jesus votes green. Honorable Casey Allen Johnson is excused. Honorable Doctor Andy Nez. Honorable Doctor Andy Nez votes green. Honorable Rick Nez. Honorable Rick Nez. Honorable Rick Nez did not vote. Honorable Nathan Nota.
Green.
Honorable Nathan Nota votes green. Honorable Shandine Parrish. Honorable Shandine Parrish votes green. Honorable Jermaine Simonson. Honorable Jermaine Simonson votes green. Honorable Danny Simpson. Honorable Danny Simpson votes green. Honorable Carl Slater is excused. Honorable George Tolt.
I vote green, ma'am.
Honorable George Tolt votes green. Honorable Otto So is excused. Honorable Curtis Yanito. Honorable Curtis Yanito. Honorable Curtis Yanito.
Honorable. Honorable Yanito votes green, thank you.
Honorable Curtis Yanito votes green. Honorable Sherlin Yasi. Honorable Sherlin Yasi. Honorable Sherlin Yasi did not vote, going back up. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi did not vote. Honorable Vince James. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate James votes green.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Rick Nez. Honorable Rick Nez. Honorable Rick Nez did not vote. Honorable Sherlin Yasi. Honorable Sherlin Yasi. Honorable Sherlin Yasi did not vote. Madam Speaker, you have sixteen in favor, zero opposed, and Madam Speaker not voting. Ah, here. We do have a vote of sixteen in favor, zero opposed, and Speaker not voting. The most, uh, the legislation carries forward to Navajo Nation Council. Ado Canes Nana, we have item B underneath new business. Legislation zero zero eight six dash two three. Uh, the sponsor is Honorable Chair Eugenia Charles Newton. I just did receive a text, uh, from Honorable Chair Charles Newton to be asked to be excused. So we do have an excusion, so we don't, we do not have the sponsor here with us. Ado, this, uh, for the record, just mark that for an excuse absence. Ado na shatna hold just to let, uh, shekaido shudne. Item C, legislation zero zero seven six dash two three. Uh, sponsored by Honorable Danny Simpson. I believe he does have his agents with him too. And we do have comments and questions on this legislation. Kodo shi shina, Honorable Simpson, give you, uh, we'll give the time over to our staff to properly read the legislation into the record.
Legislation zero zero seven six dash two three. An action relating to the resource and development and Navajiahtit Committees. Rescinding Resolution NABIJA dash zero five dash two zero. Opposing H R twenty one eighty one and South ten seventy nine. The Chaco Heritage Area Protection Act of twenty nineteen. Until such time as a buffer zone surrounding Chaco Cultural Natural National Historical Park is reduced to five miles. Opposing the withdrawal of approximately three hundred fifty one thousand areas of public land surrounding Chaco Canyon. Sponsor Honorable Danny Simpson, Madam Speaker.
Here, staff, Kodo, Nani, Keta. Uh, colleagues, do we have a motion? Motion by Honorable Norman Bega. Do we have a second?
Mr. Tolt.
Honorable Brenda Jesus. Ado kwaegi shi, uh, shina, na hote shal. To present legislation zero zero seven six dash two three. E kwaegi twenty minutes to let.
Yeah, Madam Speaker, so, uh, she, um, my colleagues, uh, members of the Uh, good morning, Kiti Shito. Uh, madam, before I introduce my agents here. Uh, Madam Speaker, do we, uh, believe during standing committee, there's no time limit on the presentation? That's only during the council, is that correct? Okay, here, Madam Speaker. Uh, here, I could teach you. Dikab is on, dasa sozi, zero zero seven six, uh, dash twenty three. Kwa, shidne, wana shkahi. De, chapters, uh, that's a easy eight. Of code D, uh, five chapters. You call Lake Valley, White, White Rock. Uh, can it present in Nana, Crown Point, oh, Lake Valley. So couldn't hurt for no dona yizi. The eyes, uh, the D, yeah, D, the buffer zone. I can about win in the buffer zone. Be skinny, ten miles buffer zone. Around national, uh, deka, Chaco National Park. Akokari, la ta na diyoche, land withdrawal. Eka, three hundred fifty one thousand acres deka, chini lonsi. De ka, D D land withdrawal. Kudi keya, sinili. Asha, naangosan, di kona lapide, chini do, na wotresslande, chino, filande, chne. Atka, sinilide. Akokorene, ne, asi, the, 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 the. Heka January, inner January, da, kala si chini. Akokare, ne, na hada hasi. Joe Washington, do Joe, he, he, uh, uh, does not, does not want to work with the snow, uh, the seed, ne. He five mile, five miles, kela di, ah, he, 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 na da, slene, oh, na je, hando, so. Na, eh, he, Washington, the host, ah. Also, oh, di ten miles, ne, na so, on, chai, le. Uh, I believe that the map was sent to the, uh, Navajiahtit Committee members. Uh, then, uh, I need so, okay, the most, I could map. Heka, Chaco Canyon, so, uh. The law, go, he, he, di, the ten miles, na so, Crown Point, yeah. They cry, Chaco Park, the deer, Chaco National Park, in a, so. Ten miles, it, ne, but lot of ten miles. Now, so they, they, uh, sit, they, Crown Point, you hold, just, di, the, the lot, the ten miles, it, ne. Akok, D, the ten miles, it, in, the, the, who, er, shlan, uh, di, the, members of the, yeah. Akok, D D na, so si, hard, so, say, the eagle, k, Navajiahtit, Navajiahtit Committee. During twenty four counts, a, a, section, shnan, ta, Honorable Delegate, Mark Free, ka, is what, di, the. Diro, k, D D, uh, Idanin, so. Joe, kela, di, ta, di, the, five miles, he, ah, he, ah, ta, the, new, ah, ba, ba, la, zli. Do, catch brother, Mr. Free, k, be, Tish. Again, da, na, so, di, the, Washington, do, the, he, stanta. Kashnan, ta, Mr. Urban Chavez, do, shnan, ta, Mr. Justin Jones. Eka, uh, she, agent, ne, she, I said, they'll give you more detailed report on this, di, the. Akok, D, ne, da, nigo, eh, na, he, da, he, uh, he, uh, debate, is, on, he, dasa, so. Shnan, ta, di, the, members of the, yeah. So, Madam Speaker, I'd like to go ahead and have Mr. Chavez and Mr. Justin Jones elaborate on this, uh, legislation.
Uh, by kee, le, kodo, uh, shnan, ta, no, shlanigi, Speaker. Ado, be shbaas, an, no, shlanigi, adakon. Itna, so, thani, kido, ade, no, tsagi, uh, shnan, ta, be shbaas, an, no, shlanigi, kodo. Stha, tal, ats, uh, kon, ats, ne, ta, astha, ko, kato, eh, da, no, tsam. By kee, le, she, kodo, uh, Urban Chavez, eh, in, she, eh. Ado, uh, kodo, uh, tso, zin, uh, ashle, ta, eh, eh, sa, kodo, eh, in, shlanigi, bahu, chne. No, pan, in, shlo, na, kaidne, basa, she, la, she, da, shen, al, but, ah, ni, she, chey. Koto, ak, kodo, sh, na, eg, zado, ado, kodo, sh, chey, dan, shlanigi, negi, ke, bit, o, do, Chaco Canyon, ado, da, eh, eh, bit, pan, dan, shlanigi. Koto, ah, ek, uh, Tish, ego, eh, k, at, ne, banan, ta, eh, kodo, uh, na, ta, na, na. Ne, banan, ta, eh, in, han, le, do, le, shal, shlo, when, za, eh, she, yol, kha, lago, eh, di, what, ah, eh, kodo, do, eh, shbaas, dan, shlan, kon, ah, ten, haz, thani, da, at, she, family, it, at, ah, eh, da, ah, eh, it, eh, ho, na, haz, eh, thani, ki, eh, koto, eh, kodo, eh, do, chey, da, was, a, s, di, do. Di, kodo, uh, legislation, eh, da, was, al, so, zigi, uh, shnan, ta, no, shlanigi. Eh, uh, kodo, shnan, ta, yah, hold, uh, Danny Simpson. Di, kodo, uh, tsa, da, kha, she, do, da, yo, zhi, da. Uh, ad, ad, at, na, ke, cha, ne, kha, da, at, la, ha, ta, na, da, yo, zhi, le. Uh, no, we, da, eh, do, uh, uh, buffer zone, deh, ne, da, ado, three hundred fifty two thousand acres of, of land withdrawal, deh, ne. Kade, eh, kha, she, eh, ta, na, da, yo, zhi, uh, uh, supporting Chaco Canyon or something like that. Akok, eh, at, ad, eh, de, oh, uh, halol, yet, oh, net, oh, uh, bal, bal, do, at, la, eh, she, eh, is, eh. Di, the, uh, the Laura Jesus, shimej, uh, negi, Washington, D C, go, ah, ni, kina, na, shan, eh, de, eh, koi, ade. Uh, kodo, eh, uh, the, kushi, banan, ta, shlanigi, bel, yel, da, was, il, uh, senators. Ado congressman. Uh, kodo, eh, uh, the, Kushi, banan, ta, na, lani, gi, bel, yel, da, was, il, uh, senators, ah, do congressman. Akko, D, kuegi, uh, Khalid, eh, la. Uh, to la, D, kodo, oh, ba, 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 cha, what, ane, ta, D, the buffer zone, need a land withdrawal. Then, lay, that, oh, uh, the, balakana, lay, ni, leh. The whole thing started on its left foot. Then, na, the, shnaniki, eh, then, ne, kon, has, thani, ki, to, negi, that, uh, the, oh, tsagi, la. Eh, eh, at, ah, the, blah, ha, one, ne, ah, the, blah, ha, one, eh, and, the, what, ah, eh, ba, oh, ni, shodotni. Na, ta, oh, in, the, negi, shimeas, the Laura Jesus, and, the, ade, uh, in, ya, na, ga, ho, da, oh, ni, ade. Akko, D, he, da, ah, said, ne, the, bluh, what's, ah. Khalid, ah, eh, ah, when, he, won, eh, la, ni, eh, D, buffer zone, uh, uh, been, oh, it's, oh, ni, ni, gi. La, ne, ba, do, spah, has, a, ni, gi, eh, kodo, Senator Heinrich. Ka, D, sa, sa, tha, thirty miles, go, eh, eh, cha, nda, la, for buffer zone. Akko, kha, she, ta, eh, aj, is, da, ne, she, ah, show, na, ta, na, ta, and, eh, de, slaw, eh, ten miles, da, ne. Akko, eh, ha, she, uh, uh, you should be glad, it's only ten miles, ah, na, na, lo, ha, she, uh, cheni, chet, picture, dey. Nikhi, kodo, eh, uh, ha, jelsa, go, eh, uh, eh, di, ni, ni, gi, eh, we, she, la, sh, shla, sa, sa, tha. We're willing to negotiate on five miles, uh, eh, kodo, resolution, sa, ha, ni, eh. Eh, eh, kodo, shin, ta, ne, it, ah, oh, the, la, ha, at, eh, sti, oh, the, la, ha, at, eh, sti, oh, eh, de, she, eh, at, eh, do, ne, the, yos, ah, ah, ne, oh. Akko, D, kodo, public hearing, no, ta, uh, Brian, uh, uh, haloli, Brian, uh, Newland, or, Yele, sti. Uh, bel, gil, da, was, il, now, eh, the, queer, she, ne, bel, la, sa, le, ne. Akko, le, shimeas, ya, ha, now, eh, ad, ats, eh, sh, tha, eh, ni, it, eh, ah, kodo, ne, he, na, eh, is, oh, eh, aj, eh, la, sa, le, eh, 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 ni, ne. Akko, D, kuehas, anegi, um, sida, D, kodo, um, na, shni, na, shni, kodo, ni, trah, shni, oh, kuegi, COVID. Sida, kuegi, da, do, cho, oh, they took advantage of us, kuehas, anegi. Eh, di, gi, uh, the, ne, Wilmington, je, aj, a, public hearing, na, na, ot, li, la, no, chi, ta, ne, ade, kue, de, no, ka. Anis, na, no, eh, go, eh, da, da, no, the, biga, uh, biga, da, eh, aj, uh, is, on, eh, the, yila. Eh, ben, na, go, they rushed the public hearings. Ah, sa, skin, what, skin, what, skin, what, da, le, is, no, in, Lee, uh, Washington, ne, Deb Holland, Interior Secretary, ah, the, eh, ne, ni, slka, do, ni. Akko, D, the, kodo, eh, oh, ba, ho, no, sandoli, kuehas, anegi, shin, ta, ay, ah, do, kon, has, ot, thani, are, no, tsagi. Ah, do, kon, shi, de, shu, de, ne, no, slanigi, it, do, kodo, eh, ni, spah, has, a, do, li. Twenty, uh, uh, twenty nineteen, though, twenty twenty, eh, ta, and then, Senate, uh, was, House, there's two bills, twenty-one eighty-one and ten seventy-nine. And, eh, eh, di, nas, it, eh, is, oh, do, ni, eh, D, kodo, it, ta, eh, kodo, Deb Holland. Congresswoman, Jule, eh, tha. We, eh, aj, na, altsos, la, ts, oh, tsos. Ah, don, uh, na, go, na, na, eh, Senate, da, eh, Heinrich, Senator Heinrich, and, eh, aj, so, na, altsos, yo, tsos, a, do, ni. Akko, eh, di, it, do, na, ni, ben, na, ga, la, da, as, li, kon. Asho, D, kodo, uh, she, eh, the, la, haid, na, lani, Republicans, asho, na, altsos, eh, ni, ts, ah, eh, ah, eh, ah, and then, they, so, they, snel, kuegi. Akko, eh, eh, at, at, ah, na, altsos, ah, eh, ya, they, snel, eh, in, not, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Ah, eh, be, eliag, what, ah, is, at, us, word for word, eh, ad, negi, ju, na, snel. Eh, di, eh, Fernandez, is, na, ni, gi, sa, Congresswoman Fernandez, though, uh, Senator Lujan, eh, bij, yet, na, ba, ka, in, la, the, ak, la, na, de, is, is. Akko, D, kuegi, la. Balakana, lay, ni, la, well, how, how can you tell him no, how, can, what no, do, they not understand? Jo, D, at, eh, gi, shin, ta, eh, eh, se, ya, ba, ni, it, ta, kuegi. Akko, uh, beni, na, at, at, eh, di, ni, ni, gi, eh, D, the, sad, be, so. These two bills, sad, be, so, he, no, eh, conveyance, is, ne, page three, gi, eh, ne. Le, shni, oh, eh, aj, gi, eh, and, oh, eh, D, the, land withdrawal, eliag, at, at, three hundred fifty two thousand acres, the buffer zone. Eh, kodo, try, be, ki, la, in, ye, eh, il, la, go, eh, be, ch, oh, to, oh, ni, shni, ne. Akko, kwen, da, be, deal, ki, do, eh, bha, has, a, go, eh, their, 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 uh, dodging these questions. Akko, ni, spah, has, oh, eh, ba, yih, wi, ni, gi, eh, it's, ki, is, on, eh. Eh, at, sa, na, altsos, eh, had, eh, the, leh, eh, the. D, keya, ni, ts, at, ah, ho, de, leh, gi. Eh, di, eh, kodo, eh, ah, as, he, ah, ba, yih, it, li. Negi, care, Arizona, di, what, ah, ba, na, stay, ya, kui, na, cha, na, she. Kopi versus Navajo, at, no. Uh, 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 joint, joint land, ha, no, da, joint east land, ha, no, da. Ah, eh, ne, le, new lands, ah, de, Navajos, ke, da, ha, ne, beni, na. Kujit, ah, ho, na, dan, get, lake, eh. Kujit, ah, what, ah, eh, kon, uh, what, ah, eh, ye, na, na, kha, cha, what, eh. Khalid, eh, la. Altsala, le, ne, ha, na, el, kha, back in eighteen sixty. Ah, don, lay, Fort Sumner, go, eh, ne, na, es, kha, ah, de, uh, Navajos, awa, li, na, has, tha, ho, lji, sh. It, na, eh, kit Carson, oh, ya. And, ne, ne, is, kha, de, kon. Sa, ne, do, is, twi, do, a, chi, dan, lani, gi, chi, eh, da, ha, the, kha, ah, kon, oh, de, sa, do, aj, what, ah, eh, net, oh, ke, eh, di, tha, kha, do, ni. Khalid, eh, la, to, la, ha, what, eh, da. Nikhi, la, eh, da, ats, eh, eh, lik, is, on, eh, beh, ya, pa, ben, ka, net, net, ni, ke, da, ne, che, ben, el, kha, di, da. Nikhi, da, ats, eh, it, oh, buffer zone, da, di, ni, sh, oh, ne. Nikhi, da, ats, eh, it, oh, land withdrawal, da, di, ni, Navajo people. Akko, D, di, eh, ah, sa, eh, go, eh, kodo, ni, ke, ah, sh, de, ne, no, slanigi. Akko, D, eh, again, ha, ti, na, na, ats, ha, ki, eh, it's not kit Carson anymore, it's our own, sa, is, le, jin, lo, Deb Holland. What, ah, kujit, eastern Navajos, and, ha, ti, na, na, ats, ah. Akko, D, kuegi, ah, sa, do, what, eh, eh, sh, de, ne, no, slanigi. Balakana, na, la, then, ki, la, gi, eh, di, eh, it's Indian people versus Indian people, sa, li, de, she, eh. Kuegi, la, ah, sa, bah, in, ne. Eh, beni, na, kodo, eh, uh, uh, ni, spah, has, a, do, D, kodo, eastern Navajos, na, ni, uh, ke, da, wi, in, eh, do, a, Latis. We don't mess with those ruins in the canyons, Chaco Canyon. Do, eh, ba, ne, eh, eh, da. Eh, ya, do, huh, en, ja, gar, and, ke, no, na, has, li, sh, lay, da, da, ni, si, eh, da. Akko, eh, Khalid, ah, eh, ta, ba, la, ta, eh, uh, na, the, eh, zola, D, kuegi, ro, sh, oh, eh, eh, ne, zat, sa, tha, ta, na, no. Akko, kuegi, la, eh, oh, oil and gas, eh, oh, ben, nacha, oh, oh, ben, nacha, is, so, eh, eh, de, she, eh, eh, oh, eh, ta, oh. Eh, eh, di, eh, kodo, what, ah, eh, ke, ya, gi, ni, ts, ah, kon, na, na, ne. Ah, it, ta, oil and gas, be, federal policy, be, da, ha, lo, be, da, be, il, ch, ah, sh. Federal oil and gas regulations, oh, ya, oh, hey, you, in, altsos, de, na, yod. Eh, di, ta, oh, kha, sh, in, sa, go, eh, D, kodo, um. It's, in, eh, la, be, ken, eh, ta, oh, the whole operation, oil and gas, has to stop. Akko, eh, ah, de, in, the, jo, eh, nas, kha, do, jo, uh, bha, has, a, in, the, eh, nas, but, ah, eh, uh, ke, the, kha, kuegi. Akko, kuegi, la, kuegi, la, da, ah, sa, ah, do, eh, 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 na, na, le, di, na, ha, lo, ni, ke, oh, ni, she, gi. Khalid, ah, in, Lee, uh, Salmon Runes, north of here, Bloomfield, ah, la, eh, the buffer zone, at, then. Ah, don, na, eh, with the Aztec ruins, there's no Az, there's no buffer zone plant. You take Mesa Verde, there's no buffer zone. Nikhi, leh, eh, in, ya, na, ha, ti, oh, ti, la, kujit. Kuegi, la, Navajos, eh, do, chi, eh, do, eh, eh, da, da, do, it's, eh. She, kha, eh, da, eh, da, da, it's, they're easy, gi, ni, she, ah, sh. But, ah, eh, kodo, na, ha, ti, eh, is, eh, kodo, um. Laguna Indian, lo, sta, Deb Holland. Akko, kuegi, la, ah, sa, uh, ah, ah, sa, uh, do, do, he, what, eh, eh, kodo. Eh, beni, na, go, shin, ta, ay, ade, no, tsagi. Sida, ye, go, eh, ba, na, eh, ka, ti, kodo, shin, ta, na, altsos, ni, so, Z, gi. Eh, di, in, ha, be, na, da, oh, sh, ah, do, kodo, President, Bo Nigren, ni, ts, ah, she. Eh, it, oh, and, and, dan, eh, ka, kodo, eh, na, altsos, eh, la, be, bli, had, in, ne. Both, uh, President Joe Biden, as well as Deb Holland, do, ta, do, ta, da, no, eh, aj, na, altsos, bli, had, in, ne. Ah, do, be, be, shba, has, an, no, slan, eh, Speaker, nikhi, la, ta, ah, ha, ta. Akko, ah, eh, kodo, eh, she, cha, di, ka, eh, na, she, eh, negi, Washington DC, eh. D, Republican, uh, Party, ah, sa, ta, an, well, sam, ah, sa, ta, oh, tsagi, eh, la.
Mr. Justin Jones, I'd like to have Ramona Begay give her testimony on this issue two, Madam Speaker.
Yat eh. Shik eh doh shideneh nohlennighi, khasanilhlo. Shit eh yon nohlennighi doh beda kehgi it ahgo, anohlchgo. Okweh laj na chadasana tahagi shenannd ah, Madam Speaker, yat eh ben. Ado hepeishmahtasa ana da nohlennighi doh adi da isoltsan doh lha eh. Khontahna hisotcha. Eh doh beda kehgi it ahgo yat eh nihi dinidholi shenannd ah nohlennighi. Shia eh di dona enxlennighi eh bed ahni dona enxle. Ado tchaat nisza neba shixchiin doh kinhle chi ne da shetcheih. Ashi eh da shinalle. Oh eh bic ahho eh beda kehgi it ahgo khuet eh ya shenannd ah da nohlon nabik eh atchi. Akhot ah deh ben hit eh chi sildli, ado ben yeana nihit eh neligi it ahgo olteh. Eh bic ahho eh koeh eh chiyenda gin diltsosabik ahho kohkrahl nle eh go. Eh yeha, koeegi na chadaholh ah sildli it ah nohlchgo. Ado adi ho nohlennighi doh shik eh doh shideneh nohlennighi ke ah ke da hot onkoe na ayiz. Adon da eh ke ah hot eh sah. Laa da xi eh et saik esetah da bed ohnoh naaltsos ntahtya. Eh xi it ashita ah deh xi ntahtya. Akoho eh basana okgranlha tchaat nihle. Eh xi dah teh. Akoh eh eh koe na chah hisokhaysildli, koeet eh nihilhoh nohlon. Akohod eh ya eh, ah, ad, ad, ah, abeh i nshiljya gi konzahod eh ya eh. Na cha yelthchi doh nihit ah yelthchi oi konzahod eh nihilthahwelji shkahnishin kada. Nezna na chaipohwi naahoh. Ah deh nee nihilhoh aljixtik akoh banit inighi eh eh ben yeh gal eh nilzin doh ba na nishnihi ghaw. Eh jo eh hot eh. Akoh eh yeha, koeegi. Adon da eh koeegi, um, peishmahtasa ana nohlennighi adi da isoltsan gi doh koe resolution nihi tah dosa ltsos. Zero zero seven six dash twenty three. Eh kont eh ya eh njyonoh hatilyadoh hatit ahod eh sadigi biisso. Eh hot eh lah. Akoh eh gi si xiit eh ya eh pan soh kehsto lihliki eh kodo ben nihilchi ahhot eh xal. Akoh negehda hat eh da eh doh otahot shi doh njyonoh dat eh ne ke da hat indeh goh da. Ado eh ya eh, eh eh, ado ochot eh egot deh net eh ya eh ke da hat indeh. Jyondeh adohodin naat ahned oteh yonatz oh oltdisi leh koech alwot. Jo hot eh keh sildli. Akoh eh hot inti gi eh di it ahndeh eh ke yahegi nihitsan ba atchi oldeh. Akhot ah khalaelon, ah khalaelon. Jyondeh adoh yeana deh ado ni sildli. Akoh di eh ya eh nle Chaco Canyon sebed ni ahadahni da lehat eh da eh ba ya daatchi da leh. Akon deh eh gi si deh xi ba yaatchi igi eh ana tsil eh ba yaatchi. Anahsaz shijeh jo hot ah eh ba yaatchi. Akoh eh it ahhot eh goh. That's as defining as you can make it, it's a ruin. Koeet eh ana tsil. Ado anahsaz eh shijeh. Eh koeet eh ya eh, eh deh net eh nshon. Adon da eh koeet njyonoh la kheh da liadoh ha'noh da eh nihit deh nenit lenneh doh tsida yo adi ni da. Eh ana illenighi it eh ya eh akhonoh. Ah jeh honaasodat eh hot ah njyonoh tchaahodilhla leh eh kehoh. Ado deh nen da yilaleh beson da yilao eh konahillanolthchi noh. Eh 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 nahachahoh akonzahoh holjix. Jo eh ah deh eh ben na deh eh oh cha yud ne keh teh. Akoh et saik esetahagi da noh naaltsosigi indeh jya. Akoh eh doh xi it oh, oh tsulneh god od oh sha'xinoh da eh di naaltsosigi bed chastni da. Laa eh da na cha yean da in the nineteen thirties, the General Allotment Act of yeah Washington deh eh behezani igi lah. Jo eh bigi doh ben nakchaj eh di nit. Di ke yahegi lha nihitsan ndaha tla betsinixtlijin nohlennighi. Bed deh nat olleh gona eh ya eh ishaati chaaholtsoshi nahastzo goh eh di ke yahegi kondi da nihit olleh. Eh bic chahak itet oh lehlo, ah chexi eh ya eh la na nohsenighi it ah eh bic chahyeh noh na doh leh. Na na eh di llejigi koeegi eh ni bed tlahoya. Hat eh da eh ya eh akahda at ah da. Adon da eh akahnchhol da hollon da. Ahat eh xi llejyin lleetsoh. Ahat eh xi olada hollon da eh. Eh nihiben joholni koe naaltsosat inohltsosigi. Eh di da nihi nahastzogi piyago neh piyeon neh jolo eh eh it ah nihi. Eh xi hot ah chat olyeel nozinho xi doh shanahet onneh nozinho xi lho eh ben na cha'hot eh. Eh doh doh ta nihitet oh nihla. Jo noh hot ah eh behezani cha yee ah. Akoh nle dik ah ke ah hot eh sahgonleh ben lagana tchaahoh. Jo eh hot ah eh di ke yahegi ben naaltsosat eh jya. Eh hot ahod eh ya eh hat eh xi piyeoya daholonighi eh pan tahani. Eh ado eh bic eh adi yali ba tahaltsi roh hot ah ke yahegi eh beh bedaholon naaltsos yaht eh jya. Nihit doh ah akonoh teh. Akoh eh koe eh nihi daatzeh eh deh net wikititi tchiin da laa da. You are allottees, you have an allotment. That allotment entitles you to certain rights and privileges by law. Eh konoh teh. Akoh eh those rights and privileges, you can develop that piece of allotment however way you want. Eh nihiben joholni. Na na nle piyeoya hollonighi, if there's oil, you can develop that oil. You can ask somebody to come over with their rig and drill for that. And then take out that oil and they'll pay you a royalty for it. The law prescribes and says it's okay to do that. Deh doh doh ta nen da. That's who you are, this is different. Homsite li sahteh jyahegi eh doh be bahazan da akhot ah goh. Niheh eh ben chahazan allottees nohlennighi eh beni na goh eh you have a legal right. A legal right behezani keh goh doh ben nakchago neh eh ah akhonoh eh hasan. Eh bic ahho eh la eh khot eh. Jo eh di ben nashikoko eh ya eh di eh khot ah goh. Di khat nahodot zoahnoh eh deh na yaatchi hinah. Eh doh nihi eh na di ni da eh na di nit. Doh deh tcheheh koeenda nilchatneh doh deh tcheh doh eh dat eh ya eh. Hat eh xiit eh inapoh neh tlon pan neh khenneh ahned koeegi nazon oltdisi leh hon tahitcheh. Jyondeh eh ya eh adoh cha yoldo, ado eh it oteh yoldo adi it oh shijeh. Ah ado oh, od oba eh ho hazan sildli jo hot eh. Akoh di khat ah deh shnennighi eh ya eh chexi eh noh jo hot eh xi lho chela anoh lah. Jo eh it ah bahazan ye. Nle cha ah piyadeh ben lagana da nenighi betsinixtlijipa yltcha doh biccha isye da noh adi nehekcha. Eh xi eh ah deh xiin chat ah xiin betna hazanighi xi bic ahho xi eh khot eh. Nihit oh hot ah deh yistan nihit eh shijeh da noh goh nihit chaahon da kheh. Niheh eh doh onit eh da di. Nle cha jyineh betta deh hasikheh doh ah deh eh di chi deh doh onit eh da ah doh iti da. Chalet ah stand nihit jyaah doh leh nihit goh ye ah deh deh shem bic eh chexi. Tchotseh na noh kheh goh doh stada nihit jya. Nihi ga eh deh eh jo hot eh. Akoh eh di bic ahogo eh di khat eh ya eh koh. Eh la eh, ado deh neh neh da hola. Eh yesi deh eh ado akahadazlenighi doh nchillakhona hadazlenighi. Eh di gi kli chyeh nle doh bich njyonda doh bich yaat eh da. Yet jo lah yat olneh. Jo okban soh keh. Ado na ejdilh ki'lehlo shoh di akah doh ta deh nenighi doh nchillakhon doh ta deh nenighi xi. Da li xi benan nas, sinapanseh benan na. Ntaga'ah. Xideh, txoki benan na. Eh at xideh bed choh bihna nzeh oh akah two quarts, five quarts biyana ahoh nishnseti. Eh bihna hekchahegi eh adoh hadazleh. Eh lah eh it ah jo jo lah doh leh. Jo deh nek ehodan setzeh kehsoh da eh hot eh leh. Doh lah bich eh da. Ischaan xiit ah at ah, ah, lhni daazet chalidadaazet ben leh cha, cha, ah deh doh kchudadaazet yinneya lho da'ga'ah. Ashkatahani. Shidana at ah da doh bihindwa da doh leh. Eh doh ah, adoh hadazlenighi eh bihna hakchahoy yen daat ah eh da. Jo naanat eh. Akoh di khat eh chalet ah baj doh leh doh leh. Jo hot ah deh ban sahakheh. Akoh eh eh neh. Di koe akahadazlenighi di koe ta'awo doh di koe cheditso da ah lhna, ah lhna ha'nat jyaahodah eh. Chojeh anahsaz shijeh eh jeh. Ado ana tsileh cha xiin gi doh leh naa ltaas low noh xi eh neh eh da ndo ltaas. Jo eh xi ya jya'olnah. Eh doh ta daazet eh nahsaz ya daazet lha nahet itoh tchalnszo daazet eh eh noh hola. Jo eh xi it ahhot eh chaalpaahozzen. Jo cha eh ba ya jilhki doh basahod jilhlo. Jo ochot ah eh akoh doh becht eh da. Akon niheh eh nihilthahozzen oh. Shi taat eh ye, xi taat eh. Di xi lah dat ah don da daazet anda nihi itchi goh. Ah ita akahadazleh shaniya ah. Ah ita ba atat estcha shi taat eh ye ba na aldeh di deh. Akoh cha da ado doh konzah jo cha da ana tsileh lha naa ltaas doh ha'ni da aten. Na na eh cha da eh anahsazet lha nahet itchaahoh eh eldwell doh ha'ni da lho. Aten. Akoh di lahat eh beni na eh khotahha ni doh leh. Jo hot ah eh ban sahakheh. Akoh eh ben na ah cha'neh. Di ye shi taat eh pan na aldeh. Shi taat eh ye kohhot eh di deh. Di ye cha xiin cha nehla jo na eh yen ado ben na don da haldchinda hat eh it oteh stu. Eh nihi it ah daazet nihi masan doh nihitcheh cha neh egibik ahho eh. Ah deh kui xiin nacha hot ah nihilh, nihilnahoh hot ah. Nle deh akhot ah holjix neh. Eh hot ah bahanneh. Akon eh eh it ah hegi deh nen sinakchat oh leh. Jo eh eh gi si beni na. Akhot ah eh di cha sha'la eh neznaatsesetcha di ana tsileh doh hot ah nahodot zo. Eh neznaatsesetchanighi piyeegi. Eh eh doh akahbaka da diltchastoh hot ah deh kahchahatlehgi. Nchillakhona cha hatlehgi doh ta doh leh. Jo noh yatchiin hikheh. Ado taba tahodzo tlon heegi eh. Eh eh it za'nezahech inch eh biga'lan hi da doh leh deh neh sta da itjeh da noh. Jo eh ben na eh naaltsosi chat eh di la goh eh. Nlahh deh eh Washington deh eh ye ho van doh te ho van ya hatiznel. Ado cha holjix. Ado eh basahosoh shlin deh na ya sahaslin doh ta heh. Cha'la'ahhot zah. Di ye eh it ashid neh ah neh 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 Washington. Di naaltsosheenigih. Di bic chah eh inaadiyilh shidnoh et saik esetah sheenigih. Ado piyeon neh hollonighi doh aneh doh leh. Eh za'neh bich eh egit ah xiin. Txuydilh ilshidinih. Ye gishet eh nihi eh di ta tetolchalti noh koe naaltsos nan jya. Jo hot ah eh niheh basahosoh shlin. Akoh eh 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 di chi deh khot eh. Akoh di khat neznaatsesetcha ha'noh koe ba atchi oldeh doh kodo nihi grazes den da xiikyi jdoh. Adoh doh sodzen beltineh ben doh. Adon da eh kodo eh beda deh nish. Deh kui deh xi Washington oh nasikheh. Jyondeh et ah shon deh et adoh, adoh ba taholni da nen. Chiheh et alhoy nen koech inch eh. Shoh heh, ala ni da neh eh betsinixtlijidan lennighi. Doh ncha'anda eh nishla nen. Ah neh da, neh da noh. Ah shon nihi, nihi, nihi kha itjya yet chah nihi da iti. Jo eh di chi deh ben na tah naskit. Ado ah lhna oldeh. Ah lhna oldeh, nde eh ya, nde eh koe lha eh za'nezahhegi daazet lha na, nahet noh chehl. Eh yen koeegi na na naaltsosahana yo'nel. Jo eh di khat belchich na nih deh ah di belchich na nih deh di deh. Eh khot eh. Akoh niheh eh kodoh di nih. Niheh doh nenigibik ahho. Shoh heh. Nihi nahat alasana wash, uh, sebghahoh tzan deh. Cha'la'ahha'neh heh. Adoh hot ehoh da nihit ahah da doh tzuhixleh. Jo da di nih. Jyondeh eh it ah shon R D C Resources and Development Committee. Neh ah shon koe deh diltsos. Eh la ah neh da nen. Shoh ya da di nit doh. Eh ado ye la da asklin deh dilts. Ah kon di kon negeh goh koe da nihi nahloh. Ya ah shan sildli ashaniya ah. Eh ya andast in gwoxiin la da nihi dinid. Eh doh da biyo chiin da lah. Eh njyonoh deh diltsos. Ado di nabik eh atchi igi beda hinanaaltsosab ben na itjeh. Eh enda bedzgiil sildli deh neh ben nahatasa anighi. The governing body of the Navajo Nation is the Navajo Nation Council. Eh kodoh eh nabik eh atchi. Eh kodoh eh resolutionighi cha'aljenj. To oppose the ten mile buffer zone. But in compromise. Ah akon ah jaxiit ah yen chaatchiin heh ya nde. Ha gwoxiin lho. Ah hatit it ah shilhlo. Di nezna na tsesetchat deh nen eh it ah ndo ltil. Ah ashla tsesetchanji eh da di nish. Cha sha'la. Akhot ah la deh chat eh it ah doh leh eh kitit ha doh leh na'alten nenigixxal. Shnennighi doh eh koe behlasi tlin doh leh. Nahodoh nit eh bic ahho eh resolutionighi chat ah. Akoh eh nabi resolution zero five dash twenty. Jo eh chat ah. Eh ado ben na deh nish. Ye ge eh doh na da iti ta deh bijja elleh. Bich yehton Washington. Doh xi it ah at eh at eh da. Za'nez da nlennighi jo eh dat eh. Doh ta, doh ta, doh ta. Odi chi deh oh hot ah na deh neh kit. Eh bic ahho eh lhna oldeh doh ahned ahhot ah naaltsosla na deh issoz. Jo doh da nozinho da lah. Jo doh deh nohsendala hat eh da cha jo'ha hatit oh ahloh. Cha jo'chitah deh noh bihloh eh ba ya doh tchihigi. Eh doh ta nohsendala laa ah ah. Nihi la ahloh hot ah koda nih tenh doh na nihi da tetzil da ahloh gwoxiin. Jo doh nih doh bic ahho eh di khat eh koh. Zero zero seven six dash twenty three igi khat eh konhia doh naaltsos. Eh eh di buffer zonei od ah ben it ochihidh olgranlha. Eh khot ah konhilsotsa ltsos. Shenannd ah nohlennighi. Jo hot ah goh eh di eh ya eh jo hot eh da eh cha jo'ha'neh nih doh tasdiit ta da lah. Nihech eh egot nih. Jo hot ah goh loh eh it oh nchchont doh leh. Di di buffer zonei ah edo bic intoklas. Land watch roll hat ah xi eh ha'oh xi eh seda tajdo shano pi'gahit ah ta yo'jo'at. Akon deh the bottom line is they don't want any development around Chaco Canyon. Eh eh gi si khot eh. Eh ah tenen nchchont ah khat eh egit ah goh. Eh xi chaahod eh doh leh. Akoh di kha ban soh keh shoh. Ban soh keh shoh. Akoh di khat. Yinneye da nenighi dih za'nezgi lhihi da ah hilthchiinighi eh di. Khisani san Department of Interior Secretary nle. Ah jeh elanjah ta bedetnesta. Eh khisani it eh. Na na eh aj eh khisani doh yila ah hiltsodoh. Eh koe khat eh adi eh di it ah naaltsosi doh za'nezigi. Eh hot ah goh eh naaltsosin hi kitit eh nih. Jo eh khot eh. Eh dat eh, eh da nen. Doh nchohlhniha da aten. Doh khotin dakcheta. Doh xideh bed choh nahanda yilhniha da. Doh ltsinani hitsoh ken nihi na li keh da doh chiyani anda yilhniha da. Sedela'ah da eh kodoh eh be, beh ezadah doh tsot di niheh ya baka'ah doh akahadazlenighi. Eh beh keh da deh noh eh behezigwon da kheh. Chex eh cha deh xi eh beson na da deh doh ah. Choda, chohonida eh koe beson nchan da jdonilh. Nta xi, ntaga'ah. Doh da jdoni lah. Eh beni na goh eh ho, eh hot eh jyun neh. Eh beni na eh nihi kodoh nihi nahat, nihilzana doh Navajo Nation Council eh chon eh nihit eh na na deh. Cha sha'la eh nihi deh nebi'gah daosin. Cha sha'la eh kodoh. Akoh cha'niya. Khoti yinoh haza, ah, ah, deh khoti it's a sacred site. We don't want it disturbed. Noh deh nek koeegi eh naaltsos deh nih. Aten, neither kid, ask yourselves. If it was a true sacred site. Ah nih ye la'andal eh doh ah eh xi nahagatah. Eh hot ah da eh, eh ye lindal eh oh da it's a sacred site. Noh. Then why are there over five hundred thousand non-Navajo tourists? They go to Chaco Canyon every year. Over five hundred thousand. Akoh di xi eh ya eh heh. Jo da ah nit ihi hezah sheh et eh nihi ben lagana at oh you ah lhnaat eh ah deh. Shanani khoti yin goh hazan deh ye la'andal eh. Tsayalthchi tchoh hadazleh da'ni da leh. Eh khoti yinoh nahazan. Eh doh od sildli goh od ah chexiin khot eh yichna'ahah da. Ah tcha'li danlini keltsida gehi isota andah. Leh sha'atahayil eh oh da eh betsinazet eh oh da akoh yinohkrahl ah deh ye ilhleh. Di sheh chat eh beni ye ah deh ben lagana at oh you yani ah leh. Eh sheh et eh nihi eh hot eh khoti yinoh hazan eh. Jo hot ah ban sahakheh. Na na khoti yinoh hazan eh. Eh sheh chat eh nihi eh dih ben lagana at eh. Jo naan here konanat eh this is a true fact. Sani danlinighi ben lagana danlini. Ah dih danlonsha ah deh ndakchego. Niheh doh bahosilh ah da. Akhot ah goh. Hat eh xi itaniilzen. Hat eh xi doh ta dih neh. Ahat ah ben chaltsin da beh bich ye yelthchi. Eh hot eh, it makes no sense. Ado taa, ah, dat eh ya eh tien da da yinilhloh da bich kralloh. Hat eh ba na aldeh shixxin kehoh eh inbal biyeh hola. Nihi ga eh doh ochilh in da doh ta. Shan hot eh neh. Eh niheh eh nihi naan tchin. The sovereignty teachings that we have. The ceremonial fundamental laws that we have. Eh niheh et ati bic ahho kohkrahl dih deh. Ahoh bic ahho yin na, ahoh shahoh ilhneh da. Eh beni na goh. Let's ask the Navajo Nation Council. Di koe nihi ka'atoh jya to uphold our traditions, our laws and our ways. Jo hot ah goh. Jo ta ah nihi khoti yin goh hazan shot oh onh odat deh noh cha'la ah loh. Obich ahah doh t'ahod oh platla'g bich la soh ahah. Ah kona nda aldeh gwoxiin lho. Jo naa itleh. Nte doh ta dona nihla. Why? Because they make millions of dollars off the tourists, that's why. Eh ye beso ilh eh. Eh beni na eh doh odonanihla. Akosh eh yen nihi chikoh eh ah shon koe khatahadazleh neh. Nobody's a millionaire off of these allotments. Shaniya. Ah ye pi'gahana helleh ntaga'ah. Eh beni na goh. Jo eh da ha'nehla ben lagana, there's a saying. You can't have it both ways. You can't have it both ways. You can't say no to the Navajo allottees to, to, to develop their resources on their legal allotments. But at the same time, and, 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 and argue that you're disturbing the sacred site. And over here, you're making money off of the sacred site, the same sacred site you're saying no to. You can't have it both ways, ntaga'ah. Jo eh beni na eh niheh eh kodoh deh neh ben nahat, ah, kodoh sa'andoh. The governing body of the Navajo Nation kodoh eh ney nikhan dijeh. Ado xiin kodoh da na dih yinjo xiin lho eh khot eh ga. Shipeishmahtasa ana da nohlennighi eh ya eh chon ilhkat nit eh ye. Chon ilhna hiltehloh ye di niye. Di koe deh net oh cha yud, oh yud adon neheskheh da lho. Eh hot eh. Eh beni na eh ya eh. Beni tih za'nezah da nen. Beni di khisani chaaholh ah. Kodo shijeh di nit, he made an excellent point. Oh ltsa shoh. Ah ltsa weh nihi dinid. Ban soh keh shoh. Di sha'kisanih opa naahui la'oh sha'ah. Opa naahui la'oh sha'ah. Di shi sacred site, noh ah beni dih itzah sha'ah. Who is to say there's not gonna be another sacred site that they're gonna say it's theirs? Then it's gonna be theirs again. Wonasodhi daazet di toryon doh kjojigo smith lake onleh god da daazet. Sacred sites noh ben tahassah eh khisanih da ben hitet oh nih. Jo kjojeh kohot eh. Akohot eh. Ya deh leh beh olleh. Nihi Navajo Nation Government ah niheh deh chyeh siitskell. Ha gwoxiin la khisanih dih chan dih iti nih doh. Besopani nelloh eh bic ahho eh beh chan siit inen na cha'at ahon ezna. Eh di chi deh ben na khisanih ke yaheh neh heh eh. Akhonahnah neh lekoh. Jyon hit eh noh ahha'neh. Akhonad eh neh lekoh. Na da deh noh kheh lekoh. Doh nihilchina otza lekoh hey. Jo cha'noh xiin cha'neh lho shik eh nohlennighi doh peishmahtasa ana nohlennighi. Eh beni na. Cha'la neh heh, ho heh, cha'lahoh tza. Koechiin hat eh dih itzil. Di koeet eh deh doh ltsos. Ben na dilnixtijeh doh Washington doh ta bede dih nih. Khisanih doh ta bede dih nih. Ado toh kuda nihi ltsa'neh ntaga'ah. Eastern Navajos Ani tlon yet eh hey. Jo hot ah eh ah shi dih neh. We still exist here. Di naaltsosheen sozat ah nen zenit ah dih kui it saik esetah. Ah nen zenit ah kodoh. Beh ina'andleh hat ah shinabich eh jeh wshon doh leh. Lihi it ah goh. Nihi it oh nih dih. Beni dih it ah hot eh. Don't try to fix something that's not broken. Jo naanat eh lho. Akoh eh beni na goh eh. Koe eh ye eh chon inaheltehloh ye eh. Ah, ad, ah, 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 kui jyena haloh doh. Ben dilnixo eh nit eh leh ho. Akhot eh ga xi, shipeishmahtasa ana nohlennighi da ltsan deh lha konah hisotka'ah doh da hisoltsan. Akoh ben chahyensen. Koe eh eh, 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 ah lah leh. Nda noh anighi doh Madam Speaker yeha kodoh eh njyonoh eh ya eh. Koe lha leh. Kho deh deh net ah nebich eh ndahazegi. Ben nih gi koeegi eh ah lah leh. Nlini ndasoh asan. Njyon ye ah, khot eh hey oh njyon neh. Akhot eh ga nahat ah, hot eh la be tahu ye na oh. Setah khot eh oh. Eh hot eh oh. Eh ye nihi dinidholih.
Like that. Catman Speaker. Uh, I'm just on your behalf, any members of the Navi Gethe. Again, uh, the, 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 after the capes, I said, so see. We wanted to make sure that, uh, members of Navi Gethe fully understand why this legislation is before Navi Gethe eh da. Ado ah la naan ko hanadoh ceti koe. Nehin da kay, um, shantalen deh nohtsai, uh, members of Gethe. Koe three agency eh koe adat sih dih da. And I have one more. But all the individuals here, the his kind, his key. I consider them all my agents, dih da. Uh, hin da cap not eh hekwan deh his key. Ah, I said be that heh adi da. He Washington, he, ah, hin da, ah, doh, 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 ah deh. So eh na di koe, uh, Mr. Travis, don't be joining your hati. Akoh Madam Speaker, I thought naan if the one of agents will speak. Eh, Mr. Ramona Begay, I should be, um, she can introduce herself, but she's the one that lives next to the park. So Madam Speaker, I'd like to request, uh, give, uh, Mr. Ramona Begay, uh, some time to speak. So Madam Speaker, I'd like to request, uh, give, uh, Ms. Ramona Begay, uh, some time to speak.
Ya't eh? Ah'ro ya't es'ent'ah'ek'oto Honorable Delegate Danny Simpson k'oto eh ya'eh'nh'ha'win'la. Ah'ro n'de'ta'ah'ro, uh, the twenty-fifth Navajo Nation Council. Ad'ala'ja'to in the members of the Navajo Nation Council eh ya'ek'oto N'v'get'ye committee. Ah'yan ni he'deshni'ido'leh. Ah'ro n'de'tya't eh'irdo'ni he'deshni'ido'leh. Ak'osh eh'ya'eh? She'ju eh'ya'eh Ramona Begay yin'xia. Ah'ro bet'ah'ni n'shle. Ken'lechi'ni ba'sh'sch'in. Sa'nah'ob'ith'ni da'shan'ala. Nah'ob'ani eh'ya'eh'ta'sh'che'eh'ah'hot'ah'eh'istan'a n'shle. Ah'ro di'de k'eh'ba'yet'ki'igi eh eh'ya'eh? Hal'tso' shi'eh'ya'd at'ah'na'had'eh'eshn'eh'son'ya eh eh kwe'eg'eh'ya' ben'ya. Ak'oh eh'ya' ben'ach'eh'ha'j'oh eh'ya' be'has'ond'ol'eh. Ak'oh di'de kad'um, ke'yah'ba'yet'ki'igi to'hat'ot'soh'ahn'ani'igi to'ben'ot'soh'ahn'ani'igi. To'x'oh'et'eh'da eh'ya. Um, ba'yet'ki'nl'eh. Ak'oh di'de na'gh'etsa'zai'be'ya'ani ah'eh'hol'ye'eh'ki ts'ata'ah'hol'ye'eh'ki. Ak'eh'eg'eh'ya'eh? N'l'le'da, al'ke'da, um, eh'ya'eh n'hyem'asan'eta'nlini'ido ni he'ch'e'edanlon. N'chah'stwi'danlon, n'hyes'ani danlon eh'ya'eh kwe'eh. Ke'da'hat'inde di ts'ak'oh'eh'ya'ba'yet'ki'igi. What is now National Park Service today eh n'l'le'da eh'ya? An'le'g'ult'ede kon'da'ste'ido ah'de'nda'na'ta'iste. Ak'oh ah'de netanlinigi't ah kwe'eh ke'da'hat'oh'hol'j'shchan'z'at'eh'shi. Ak'oh kwe'eg'ets'ak'oh haz'ani'igi to'han'tso'do eh haji'ne'eh'han'ne'eg'ido pet'adit'eh. Jot ah'eh'ya'ha'has'an. Ak'oh ni he'dene'eta'nlinigi ah kwe'eh ke'da'hat'oh'hol'j'shko. Eh'oh eh di k'oto eh'ya'eh? Um, n'chah'stwi'ya'yal'tki. Ah'hot'ah eh'de ne'ke'ech'eh'han'ne'eg'epet'adit'eh. Jot eh eh'ya'eh nas'hol'j'shki eh'ya'eh n'l'le'da early nineteen hundreds. Ita'eh'ya' bel'agana. Yal'ye'eg'eh nit'han'ney'ado eh'ad'oh'sht'eh'ha'hol'j'shigi eh'ya'eh di ke'yah'ne'ba'g'ad'ah'at'san. Ak'oh in nineteen oh seven i'chah'ha'da eh eh'Washington linigi eh'ya'eh be'has'ani eh'yla. Eh ben'ach'eh'ya'eh di kwe'eh ke'yah'has'ani'igi ts'ak'oh'eh'ya. Ak'eh eh'ya'han'tso' she'pa'chans'ond'ol'eh. No'eh'aj'eh khot'ah'eh'yal'tki'oh'ya'hol'la. Ak'oh ita'eh'ya'eh, um, haz'ani antiquities at'hat'no. Ah'hot'ah eh eh'ya Congressman shi'eh'ya'la'da'slin. Eh ben'ach'ego eh'ya'eh di nen'linigi kwe'eh ke'da'ine'eh? Ad'eh k'eh'to'na'nohl'ka'da'ol'eh. Oh ke'ah'hot'ine'ek'ot eh ke'ah'hot'inde'ol'eh. Ah'hot'eh'ago be'bah'oh'ah. Jot ye'ne'eh'ya'eh nas'na'had'esh'ij'eh. Ah'de eh'ya'eh na't'ani na'tanlinigi di'bel'agana Washington de'ya'han'ach'eh'ki. Eh'lah'hot'ah'na'na'ta haz'an. Ak'osh il'ak ad'eh'ya'eh? Ten nen'linigi to'kwe'eh ke'da'inde'ad'ol'eh. Te't'at'eh'le eh'ya'eh bel'agana. Be'tol'eh. To'Washington do'be'ke'yah'ad'ol'ne'ila. Ben'ina'ago eh'ad'nen'oh'linigi eh eh'indlah'oh'ol'eh. Eh'le'ch'ago da'eh'ya'eh? Ni he'ye'el ni he'ch'ad'ad'och'et'epet'oh'ni. Ah'hot'ah eh'ya'eh by force. Ni he'dene'eta'nlinigi't'et'epet'nohl'ka'do ni'w'ech'et'epet'oh'ni. Ak'oh oh'hot'ah eh'ad'eta eh'ya'eh di'de within the canyon ben'ot'eh. K'oto'ni'da'lo'ko'oh'hot'ah eh ben'ana'esh'da'yla'aj'eh. Ak'oh ni he'eh'ya'eh ni he'dene'eta'nlini'eh'ya'eh tl'ok'oh outside of the boundary. Ah'de. Eh'ya'eh tl'ok'by'ye'let bet'sa'hi'eh'hal'da'ly'ad'ot'lo eh'ya'eh bet'pil'ch'eta'ispans. To'ah'de by'ye'lt'oh'oh'hopan'da'hasht'ja. Ak'oh oh'hot'ah eh'ya'eh n'l'le'da n'chah'stwi'danlini'de eh'hot'ah eh'ya'ik'et'k'od'ah'ozni. Ah'ro ah'de be'g'anda'nlini'eh eh'et'sch'in'de eh'ya'eh tl'ok. To'ah'ye'se'be'ke'ek'eh'na'z'ad'ah. Ben'ina'ani'igi eh'ya'eh di Washington linigi't ah't'at'ah'lt'sho. Ho'wan'ama'set'an'la'da naz'nal'ah'go'da. Ah'ro tep'ep'g'ana'z'nal'ah'go'da. Eh di'k'ad'eh'ya'eh to'to eh'ya'eh be'ke'ek'eh'ta'tol'eh'ta'hot'oh'ni'ido. Shi'oh'hot'ah eh'ya. Ni he'dene'eta'nlinigi ye'ye'go eh'ya'ek'et'k'od'ah'ozni. Ak'oh eh ben'ach'ego eh'ya'eh sh'suzi'igi. Eh'ya'eh shem'asan'eh'sh'che'edanlini'de. She'ch'on'eh'tanlini'de kwe'eh ke'da'hat'inde jot eh tcha'eh'ya'eh'irda'epet'ne'ska'd. Ak'oh eh ben'ach'ego eh'et'and'atz'stke'ego ah'ro eyes'ns'ago eh'ya'eh ha'ye'el t'asht'asht'ja'da. Ak'oh di'sch'in'de eh'ya'eh ni he'ke'ha'uit'ani'igi. We live one quarter mile from the park boundary today. Ah'ro n'hin'ago dot u'ha'yun'he'ek'eh'linigi't ot'ah ke'da'hat'eh. Ah'hot'ah eh'ya'eh di'k'at five miles ha'nan'ani'igi. Eh eh'ya'eh't'and'eh? That impacts us as families, communities within around Chaco Canyon. Ak'oh n'l'at'eh ben'na'de bel'agana yann'se'keso. To'k'is'ani yann'se'keso eh'ya'eh di'sch'in'de. Ben'nen'linigi't oh'la'ah kwe'eh ke'da'hat'inde. Jot ah'eh ben'ch'an saha'kes. Ak'ond'eh eh'ya'eh? Di'sch'in'de ni he'et'ati ah kwe'eh eh'ya'eh ke'ha'uit'eh. Ak'oh eh jo'eh'ya'eh n'chab'ni ni he'lt'ha'os'ond'ol'eh. Ni hin'na't'ani nohlinnigi. Ak'oh eh ben'ach'ego eh di'sch'in'de eh'ya'eh di'k'at ke'yah'ba'win't'eh. Do'han'tso' shi'eh buffer zone eh eh'bi'k'ist'eh'ol'eh. Ah'ro ke'yah'to'ne'ch'hat'ot'hat'ot'so. Ha'nan'ani'igi eh'ot'oh'hot'eh'da to'ye'go ent'oh'ni he'lt'oh'hot'at'eh'da. Chala'eh'ya'eh ni he'dene'eh'linigi ni he'ek'eh'linigi't ati ah kwe'eh ke'da'hat'eh. Ah'ro thw'nda'ye'eh't ati. Ah'ro electricity do'hl'ot'oh'la'b'iy'ha'da's'teta. Ak'oh oh'hot'ah eh'ya'eh ke'da'eh. Ak'oh di'de oh'hot'ah be'has'ani linigi be'ken'anas'tki'go. Al'ya'ago'go. No development ha'ne'eh? Ak'oshan eh'k'oda't eh'igi. Tchot'ashon da'eh'ya'eh bech'et'la'ot'seh'eh'da. Bet'san eh'ya'eh ne'k'oda'do'ne'ila bech'ah'tol'eh. K'eh'ba'na'da'ho'n'tl'ad'ol'eh. Jot k'ota'eh'ya'eh pan'sa'kes. Ah'ro n'de'ta'ahl'ni he'dene'eta'nlinigi't ot'ati n'da'nohl'ka'd. Ak'oda't eh'go'da be'ke'eh'na'nohl'ka'da eh'ya'eh be'da'hol'oh'do'ta'ta'yo'ja. Ak'oh eh'de shan'eh'eh'ah'eh'ya'eh'irdo' ben'na'da'ti't'eh'ol'eh. Jot di'sch'in'de eh't ati eh'ya'eh'la'ah'hot'ah'ye'ina'ade'eh'ne'eh. Ah'hot'ah'ye'eh'ya'eh k'oh. Di'de eh'ya'eh ba'had'is't'eh'to ts'oda't'ah'ts'ko ni he'ek'eh'linigi. To'ni he'dene'eh'linigi eh'ah'kwe'eh ke'da'hen'igi'to. Eh'ya'eh ts'oda'eh'ye'se'ba'win't'hen'igi ke'da'hen'igi eh eh'ba'ba'ya'sht'eh. Ah'hot'ah'ye'eh'ya'eh k'oto eh'ya be'be'had'is't'eh'li'do. Ah'ro n'de'ta'na'gh'eh ni hin'ago chapters be'na'z'ana'go. Ak'ondo be'ke'tcha'di'ka'ho. Al'to' oh'hot'ah'eh'ya'eh k'oh be'ha'j'oh be'be'tah'wil'ne'eh. To'inda be'be'isht'ane'et'etenil'sen. Ben'ach'eh to'eh'ya resolution da'k'oh'ye. Ye'eh'ya'eh n'chay'eh landa'ih'le'tol'eh. Jot ah'do'ye'edi ke'na'zi'dol'eh. Ah'hot'eh'ko. Jot ah'tan eh'ya'eh the early nineties, nineteen nineties eh'tan'lt'o. National Park Service ay'tan ke'yah'eh'igi nas'ko. Be'nas'di'igi nas'na'de'desla. To the west, they extended the boundary. Ak'oh ad'eh'le Lake Valley be'g'at'eh'yan't'eh. Na'ana to the east. Ah'j'ego to'na'gh'ep'op'op'ntaro bech'et'et'oh boundary fence'igi nas'de'desla. Ah eh beni na'do. Ni he'ni he'dene'eh'linigi ni he'ek'eh'linigi. Their allotment turned out to be inside the park boundary. Ak'oh di'sch'in'de eh'ya'eh at'ah'ro. Ah'ro ot'ot'for them to freely go visit their allotment to be'has'an. They have to be escorted by the park rangers from the national park. Jot ah'na'has'and'le'eh'hot'ah eh'ya'eh bel'agana linigi ye'ni he'ch'et'na'bnish. Eh'ya'eh kwe'eg'eh'ya'eh j'oh ba'had'eshn'eh'son. Eh'hot'ah eh'ya'eh k'oto. Ba'hu'esh'ne'et'ol'eh. L'ko' ash'onde. Ni hin'na't'ani nohlinnigi ye'go eh'ya'eh n'chab'ans'ok'yes'oh k'oto. To'ta'di'nen'igi eh'ya'eh n'chab'eh'soz'ii'dol'eh. L'oh'hot'ela'k'oh oh'hot'ah'eh'ya'eh? Ah'han'ne'eg'ish'la'dol'eh. To'eh'eh'ans'q'ago.
Like that, Madam Speaker, though, I don't. Sh'nt'ani, members of the N'v'get'ye committee, okay, now, I can teach you, though, in the. If you'd be'sani, that's a s'ats'osi zero si- zero zero seven six nine two three.
I need either uh Secretary Holland's, because he's been in Zoom meeting this past Tuesday. Uh calling there, yeah. I don't think Mr. Urban Travis though, Mr. Lord Jesus. I'd add Zidol she has seed of man speaker. I call, I'll hit his hand up. I shown that Kurehan God. I shown that Dida, the Navy, I I did it. And then I'll hear how to see the figure, I'll hit it neither. Oh, yeah, that's it, you know, you can't chapters, they're a shy. They're a yeah. Yeah, I'm a little bit sad, did it, no? I don't hardly start to cheer. Probably just only during her campaign. But the buffer zone by by the way, they're key dog, now I'm trying to get all the hand god. Yo, it's a happy thing, yeah, yeah. Then, I need to have a CD, I need to know, you know, the shit, that then. They did kill them, question they got out of, out of answer, maybe, yeah. Oh, I can't, that's it, we're kidding me. You had man speaker on the call. You had members of the Navajo Nation President on the call. But God, Jay, neither, we were disrespected. Oh, oh, the host, I'm going to hit it, so. How can you disrespect the leaders of the Navajo Nation, speaking on, speaking for the Navajo people? The what's that? But I need to much, yes, this morning. They talk about me, so yeah. Near Pelmont, Taro. I don't, I like his army, not an actor, no, this, this person, no, no. He can't, he's even worried, they leave, they can't, he can't, he can't, the banana. The site see, I didn't, it's, no. With that information. The Laguna pedals being out there. It's shown that they're already getting ready. Once this was come law, the buffers on the, you know, they are going to go after our land, those public land. To be safe, this belongs to the peoples. I didn't, I didn't, they secretary, they clean it all. Why don't know, since the land can be, they clean it, I don't know if it's like members of the, yeah, yeah. Did a land can be, see, I say. It's a dehica. I need, but I'm the Congress, they clean it, and that's legal, Senate, House, it do, President, he's here, he's like. Any tribe, the land withdrawal, buffers on it, God, but let us link it, but it's on, but let us link it. Any tribe can ask for this public land. Guess who's the final authority to say yes? The Secretary of Interior. So I didn't know it's fine. So A, now, they said, I don't need, don't do that. They clap, uh, they, uh, they went through this, they went through this whole thing. They can never hope he had anybody, he. We don't want to go through that. I really don't want the Navajo peoples go through that. So with that, I know, I show us, uh, uh, members of the committee. I show that, yeah, a little bit of, we, we do not want, we're going back to zero buffer zone. And we're not, we do not want the land withdrawals being proposed by Secretary Interior, either. So with that, with man, um, speaker, uh, that will conclude our presentation. I can, I can, this is not a members of the, yeah, thank you.
Oh, could I, I can't, no, no, uh, Shana, Honorable Simpson. I don't, she must, oh, I can't, I guess, the hagi, uh, she, yeah, she, no, like, I can't. But I'm gonna go and get the house, so, no. I don't, couldn't, I don't, Honorable Norman, but gay, eh, you had this not, though. Brenda, Honorable Brenda Jesus, eh, you can't, yeah, I could. We do have a motion and a second for this legislation. I don't, I can't, she, eh, uh, best, but that's, I know, need line, again, she, no, I don't. Uh, it's a, he, but I still, uh, Shana, Honorable Norman, but gay.
Yeah, no, no, dear, I don't.
D Secretary, Department of Interior, Deb Howland. Deb, di no, oyo yen, um, do, 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 do eh, nihiya at eh ho eh ko, ba yeit khitnle. Mda kodoo oh banan hinshkahto bansoh kesnle. Department of Interior, jata sata oh ah ni. Oh koho she kodoo zehi jim bakahto eh, oh yu yidze inahot i ilto. Kodo kea, uh, isht ehodolni, dadit no. Nle ahdo lechjen hadahkede dan, wetan, haz aneh git ah, yon da hodolni, nihiyel, nihiyeho. Eh de, eh ehhot ah, heshog, eh de atla dhotle, dadit no, eh kodoo bedeni ke. Oh koho kodoo, ad na khit edadze, washin dono, nshid nsaayak, ad. Oh koho oyen yen kodoo, be shmahtas aneh danidlini, oyo yen don khahas ahde nahaln. Oh ko kodoo eh eh ilanje, uh, kodoo President Nigren, eh adakui chingi lechhasani, has thadani na. Oh koho nihiyet go, uh, be shmahtas aneh nitlinigi, oyo yen don khahas ahde. Oh koho, oh ko kodoo oh shabansoh kesdoleh, eh di kodoo she, eh eh, eh adet, eh ala eh di keyahegi. Banahin shkaajo, aden nanstadoleh. Oh koho shit, uh, kot eh go eh ko, hashinshgo eh da, eh, um, eh 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 eh. Eh eh behi hade shashinsen, do bechet hade stihinsen. Oh koho eh ya, uh, di, di, um, I need those doors open. And, and, and that, you know, ability, um, to, to speak to her. Oh ko hot ah she, oh obansoh kesdoleh, this is, uh, chako, um, is one of several issues uh, that we're dealing with as a Navajo Nation. And there are other, you know, environmental concerns and issues throughout our nation. Eh she so ajipadet, eh jo ajik atta sitta. Oh koho, ad na, ah na, ah na, kihin na na ka, uh, kudeh. Ahdo eh she ahde isna ol, olteo. Han it ah eh eh ya ad ne, uh, hashin ahde eh ya tahnan ta, eh adoh hashi eh ajek. Oh koho eh di ya obanseskes, ad na kinahaje, eh eh ya kon, konzayit ziinle. Oh ko oh she oh heyu yidze, uh, bedeni lje, nahaln, do bansoh do khusigi eh hot eh. Oh ko oh ya, oh hot ah be hadestee, ahdo heha.
Heha kodoo Honorable Jermaine Simson. Ahdo do konen eh lahanana zihoh. We'll give the floor back over to Shana, kodoo Honorable Simpson.
Uh, keh, Madam Speaker, do are, Shana, any members of the, the committee, ahdo are, Mr. McGee, heh, supportive kind like. Yo, you're from Eastern, Shanta, and you fully understand what we go through as being a checkerboard area. And hugget eighteen, I say heh, this name, Mr. Honorable Delegate Norman McGee, ahdo are shima. Madam Chair, Brina Sisto, heh, Nana. So the, uh, Madam Chair, the RDC Lonsa, Brina Sisto, uh, checkerboard area, Yegor Bahazin. So chapter, na shne she, it's under Eastern Agency, so di eh ho yen, di de, I say. So di koreki da di, I, um, Yegor Bahazin. Oh ko kere, uh, Honorable Delegate Simson, heh, ha, zi di de. Yo, we're here. Di kwa, Chaco Canyon, Buffer Zone Eagle, hot eh, da. We're willing to sit down with the government, federal government, di, jo di de. Is ani, di na be it here, la da sle, the official statement, that we're willing to work with by my Buffer Zone. That the Eagle compromise. And it keeps bigging bigger and bigger, the ten miles. Not so Lee Crown Point, not so Lee Smith Lake, not so Marano Lake jet, I jet. I don't understand how, I'm not, I, I, look, it is kit a di de. Ten miles, you know, Crown Point's not ten miles away, Smith Lake go ten miles, the, out of Marano Lake. Oh ko di kwa, Washingtoni, jo, da di nish, jo ba yed di kya. It's not disrespecting congressional people, it's not disrespecting the, the Secretary of Interior. But are hin eagle, uh, kwa, jo, ye di kya, jo ba ye di kya di de, are han ga. It's past Tuesday, da. We still address her as Madam Secretary, we still respect her, address her as, Shanta. Are di de, ani, keep, uh, if she respected Navajo Nation goh, biga, ah, na yizi xadi, xadi xikar. Jo ba yed di kya, iraki da ilta. Eh ba yashkya, kore de ni kahontahari gat, are. Madam Secretary Howland, jo, ahro jo, yichun, ar yichun, ar biga, ar di ni de. So, uh, Madam Speaker, eh di yas, so mostly were just comments, though, heh, heh, this name, Mr. McGee. Um, Madam Chair, Brina Sisto, are shima, uh, Simson, uh, Honorable Douglas Harrison, name, kido comment in lai. We understand what you're talking about, but it works both ways, works both ways. Respect both, uh, works both ways, di de. Though she kere, I, we help each other, di de. What's, what needs to be addressed throughout Navajo Nation, what needs to be, to work with the federal government. So, Shanta, that will conclude our presentation, again, heh, if there's, uh, those are just comments we didn't have to answer. Uh, Shanta, Mr. Jones, you want to respond to anything?
Yeah, satsle, ahdo, um, shanalle, I get laje, ad eh, na hasan tanle, oh. Ahdo, are then da eh de, kitslelino, ahdo sahre be hadaistee, selene jo heha oh, eh koduh. Oh, eh yi si hinixi daadze eh ya eh, di nek ehon si keh segi hinixi daadze eh, eh yi si xin bohulni. Oh ko nek ehon sitze keh sego goh, jo hot ah goh, eh ado leba yajiltkiyo eh, eh lahohot ehle. Nanat abelagana ehon suna zekhese goh, eh xin llo eh lahoh nanat ehle. Oh kon de eh ya eh, di kon kodet oh yid neil adid, ahro oh yu, ahro na heskida. Oh koho eh ya eh, naltsos eh betxas ni Washington, da pe inanat. Atseik esetahagi na konz etah hashit ah eh, juno de eh be, ina di lihtapetoh niid. Eh di yen eh bets ah, ahha naltsos do, to control that, to tell the person that a loti. I'm gonna give you all the rights and privilege, but years later, de de ohhot eh de. Hallna kinansli, xin welya, hallna kinle, basa nahhot jello. Jo eh bets adi ikha, ahro oh konhietl endowleh, jo eh xin eh yi si de eh, ahha neh. Eh ahro oh konhill, ene ahro ohhot eh heh, jo nanat eh. Jo da ah, nego da eh eh da ah ne, ene ellot edinahod eh nahazdhan eh, jo da ah nen ilsah goh. Ntillsah goh kwa, egi di shi she keyahegi bakhay kodoo kaha hatle, ntillsah goh eh, ade shana. Ahne na pe, nll, eh hashit ah, chunx, eneki, jo ko konsha altschin oh heyu, ahdo da yo ya'ah deh. Ahro, ahro keh dosa esada. Ahne ade shana, jo eh eh nek ehho ahha neh, halit ah, oh xadu xin Washington deh. Eh oh ade yajiltkihodoleh, lo konsha na, jo noh, ene, oh, ahne nll eh. Di captains eh segi, be tahdi nahde kui da da peh dan, tlqal, ishaan xi da nen teh dohleh. Do de shit oh, juno, shit cholhadazleido, di ndiltleh da xi daholhono do, oh xi chen da, da ade. Chiyanda nahillnehoh, ade ahne nahachya, hot ah xi keh on, de she eh di rohhot eh dan dagah. Ahye nahodin, shpa agoh da, ahnda eh neghe, nahliyaba hawa, anzela shilla lah alwo. Jo da noh, eh da, ne di, de nekho de keheth, eneki, oh koho eh hot eh, ahro, oh, xayu xibahat oh, zeho, oh kon de di lahoh, eh hot eh soh. Nege de Senator Ben Luhan, nahanaya, negez illa oh tili school deh, ahni xin lah nahha yen, oh xaxin hordishneh. Eh ekhonoh, environmentalism, we need to protect the air, we need to protect the water, we need to protect this and that. Di hot ah goh dohleh noh, ah don da eh di kon sacred sites, segi doh eh bech ah dohleh noh, ya na'ghaw eh yaltki. Ah don da eh napetill kitsle, soh, shenan, andle negi Senator Luhan. Chedinah di kon kinso, anegi dohle nahoh konshigoh de di in. Eh ol yetz illa oh tili, yo de zilwelya eh deh. Eh ekwa egi eh, yo lge, szanatleh byaho ah. Nleha ahdehod chagahod, abahazanige, alses thiro, alses nabahoh, wan kwa egi, eh ajet, ahtehhoti yinochazan. Ahde na eh nezganod choba jushchin ahde na, akho eh nan, nalya, akhon byaho ah. So if you go on top of that mesa, there are four pools of water up there. Eh yi yi nabet, nabet ilbeho byaho ah, eh nihinke di ye, eh da. Jo hot ah goh, if you're sincere about hoti yego, hazan de noh goh, water and air, de noh goh eh. Remove those towers from our sacred mountain, remove them. Jo hot ah de ah, neh, da niidoleh. And all you Navajos that are in here, that are advocating for this, a queen or so, eh. Advocate to remove those towers over there, jo hot ah de ah, neh dohleh. You can't say one thing and do another over here, eh ashpetisneh, you can't have it both ways. Dona kikhotan dagah, xajegoshi yi si besins, jo eh, that's what these people are arguing. So if your argument is water, air, and environmentalism, then how come we don't teach our children how to do yen in the spring, summer, fall, and winter? Hashit ah eh yen dan, eh hado it eh de as the Navajo Nation, jo hot ah de ah, neh dohleh. Why are we actually negotiating our water out? If it was really true, di sheh, eh niha hot ah banek, heh koduh, but yet we say we're gonna protect our water and our air. Di doh beh, eh deh. So, di nek eh goh, so eh, let's keep it that way. Jo hot ah eh ahha neh, eh she, be shketi thi, hiki she, juno be shi, yat, hito peh, na, hiz, thino she, njo neh, don sheinchat eh deh. Jo eh hot ah goh eh ya eh, ahha, nila eh, that was the gesture when the legislation was to say, let's do five miles instead of ten miles. Eh eh, that was a gesture, a goodwill, let's talk things out, jo hot oh, ni neh. Oh kho jo ni hitsah niltsos, jo eh hot eh ga, shik eh, eh kweh de, as wanted to, eh eh kweh de, sahre ilhla, kweh bakhah, nahde shat, shenan da, satsle, heh.
Uh, Madam Chair, so, uh, Shanta, any members of the committee, they'll be, I mean, they'll be our response back, heh.
Hashi heha nana, uh, shana do, shanalik, kodoo sa behanahoh, so tsi iki, ahdo konen nahasa, otkane, ashode, uh. Just keep the noise a little bit down, if you're having side conversation, hashi at ot inahas ah, alto. And just reminder to keep your phones on mute, alto. Ahdo kwa egi, uh, na tchidiki, uh, Shiyaj, Honorable Herman Daniels.
Madam Chair, um, good afternoon. Are then da kodoo, shanadka, shlenegi kodoo, Navajiyet here Committee, uh, rokon shlonegi. I see, heh, kodoo, ahdo nana kodoo, shilna ash, Honorable Simpson, kodoo. Naaltsos, eh doh keh degi, sahbe danahodit ahay. Kodoo nihi tahminsho legislation kodoo, eh binmasago kodoo, nabeg iyeelti, akho eh holdzeste. Oh eh ba baheh, Simpson kodoo, ahro adh, sekeh, adh, shonshonegi, eh doh heh, gudnihi de desnil, adh, shonshon. Oh ko kodoo nihi tillsah si winna, ad eh eh, ellah toh li, oh, ohhot eh la kodoo, ado leh, chotsa naht, iho da. Ahhot ilsahle, waltsenoi ado lebech naht, iho da, chot ilsahle, ahronhot eh xin ho. Oh ko di di kodoo, hashinsho eh, uh, shido eh ayayash ilsah deh. Oh ko, adesnila kodoo, be shmahas anitlenegi, zudahl ahde eh iyeelti, ahdo nana, zudahl ahde eh inzi keh. Danle iyeelti, olde kya da, tete, twi da fani, tahaztand, ah de banzi keh so iyeelti, le, galtsenadeh, kahdeh. Ah de inzi keh so iyeelti, le kodoo, and tahaztide banzi keh so iyeelti, le ho. Ahronit eh ho, be shmahas anitlenegi, clantit, zenegi, oh ko shesasbendoo eh, honst eh kodoo, ahdo nana kodoo. Adesnilnegi, da ni bahasi, nege, um, Twenty Fourth Council, Resources and Development Committee, thad, eh, ahde nani, kayko. I really appreciate the advocacy of former council delegate, Honorable Freeland, Mark Freeland. Eh kodoo do da si, um, chako, chako eh adi niid, neh kodoo, be tillsah goh, kodoo yen, yichna halneh, kon nege, um. Um, RDC itan danahat, hago, oh ko eh binmasago kodoo, nege, um, Chairman Nez itan, eh, so eh, ahde nek, hado eh, kodoo eh. Peh nihi zehadashot, zidoh eh, nihi niil, eh, ahol, zidoh ho, ahro di shid, nana kodoo, shilna ash, Honorable Simpson, ah, ah, ighah nahdeh, la kodoo. Oh ko eh ayte baheh, Simpson kodoo, ahro kodoo, nege, um, ahni hot ah, eh, bahda isri kodoo. Oh ko nege, um, kodoo, um, shoda, shahstwi kodoo, Mr. Jones kodoo yahalme git ah kodoo. Nle har xin dahot in kodoo, nege, um, naltsos, be shgada, des, ah kodoo, di tseik esetahagi keya. Jo eh kodoo, nihi zehabakha doh, eh kodoo eh bek endohta doh, jo hot ah, eh, hadatelyashin itan. Oh ko di shid, eh doh, eh doh, doh del, dan danahaln, oh, doh doh, yichhanneh da, alto kodoo, nege, Washington, ah de ban da, altegi. Do I see, nihiyichhanneh, consultation deh, nanehegi, nege, um, do I see kodoo, nege, um, ajet Interior Secretary, lenegi. Um, Deb Howland, ahj binhat, ah, do I see yen, ketsa ni, gahda, oi, anle, anle, de tchadagah nahaln, oh, oh, egi, oi, eh ilsah, alto. Halit, eh doh, eh I see, nihiyichnslmesta, jo hot ah, dan taskeh, oh hot eh deh. Oh ko, hot eh, be shmahas ansilneh goh, eh doh eh, um, thadna zele, banzilshi, doh, eh, eh de banzilmeza, ahro da, ahna huist, ahdeh. Ne, ne ba eh yajiltki, oh hot ehle, oh, so eh diye, kodoo, I see, itillsah goh kodoo, halit, eh, kodoo eh. Nihi de doh, tsnisa hazasi kodoo, od abehanait, zen deh, oh, ned oh, uh, sadla. Hashit eh xi da, oh hot eh, nege, um, onasuda na'ghal, eh doh da, eh san, uh, eh snoshkhalo, dan nege, zeho, od, oh, doh, na'adel, oh, asati, danah, sosle da peh. Oi, ehk eh nahaln, oh kodoo eh, uh, chehet, chehet di, nen nahaln, oh. Oh ko, halit, eh, nihi de dohtsnil, kodoo, nege, um, shima yahazwi, kodoo, nege, um, Chair of, um, RDC. Ahdaad, eh niid, eh anah ti, ti niil, eh, kon nege, ohhot kenahal, gai goh diikha, eh, eh, ah de yahdiikha. Oh hot ah, ahdaad, eh, da ashon, nahah, ohhot nohtsnil, jo hot ah, de bansah keh sohhot eh deh. So doh yu goh eh, bansah keh sohhot eh deh, halit ah, doh leh, la, halit ah, ah, eh de goh eh, um. Nihiyichna annishtoh leh, la, jo hot ah, ahdo nana, ah, eh de goh haz, ah, doh leh, ahro hot ah, nebech naht eh. Jo hot ah, de bansah keh sohhot eh deh. Ahdo nana kodoo, nege, jo eh diye, be bek endohta, ah, jo hashinsho, nege, chere be thoh, hadadleh, da, eh goh, bek endohta, oh ko. Oh ko, kodoo eh, Washington eh, I see doh, I see, beh toh, eh doh, I see, halnoh deh, oh ko. Oh ko, anhek endohtaagi, eh, I see baheh, Simpson shesasbendoo, ahro hashinsho eh, bezdat, oh, doh nana, tsiyanda peh, tahsmi, doh nana, naltsos, ah, doh leh, eh si beban tahsmi. Oh ko, ahna, deh, deh, oh, oh yu goh eh, oh hot ehle, nege, um, amadoh, ze, tseleh goh. Doh nana, atse, nalidatseleh goh, de da, oh, eh, eh, ba bahtzol, bahtsi, ahla bahtzol, khaaleh, oh, oh, noh, eh, xin, oh, deh. Halit ah, hot ah, eh nihi zehnaht, eh, oh, deh, nihi ina, eh di gi hal, bahwin, enegi, halit ah, doh, eh de dohleh, la, si nohtsen, oh. Oh ko, shesasbendoo eh, anhoshkih, sas, nege, um, last term, nege, Twenty Fourth Council, ah, hunkih dih, anhoshkih, sas, anhoshkih, agency, zeda di, niid, eh, da, Twenty Fourth Council, RDC. Oh ko, eh de yahd ah, konkso behatzwi, dohleh kodoo, ahdo nana kodoo, oh yu goh, eh bahatzot, zihit, eh deh. Oh ko, eh doh, nihi kasthit nahaln, nege, um, lenegi, nege, balagana, da, eh, ahna, be tseh, shklizi. Uh, la deh, na na, khaagi, oh, doh, nihi kasthit ah, nana, kodoo, nihi doh, oh, oh, ban eil, jo, nahaln, oh, deh, eh. Oh, deh, niis toh, stomp kodoo, nege, um, kodoo, eh, yiti, tsnil, oh, yen, nihi, nihi yedhadaz, ah, goh kodoo, hot ah, ah, neh, ah, dan hi de dohtsnil, um, lenegi. So eh de yah, oh yu doh, hot ah, bahatzwi, dohleh kodoo, um, hashi, hoti, noh deh, ya kodoo, benzi, zin, goh kodoo, eh, niid, kha, oh kodoo, na di, ti, niil, eh gi, ahro, nasilhachuit, eneko. Oh, da, da, nekka, eh, washkodoo, eh, oh, deh, deh, banseskes, shesasbendoo, um, Madam Speaker, honsho, hatzwi, dohleh, thank you very much.
Oh ko, she heha Shiyaj, kodoo Honorable Herman Daniels. Ahdo, shdo lahanat, otchida, be shpasanani nitlinegi. Ahdo doh, kwa egi, lahanana zihoh, give the floor back over, kodoo, Shana, Honorable Simpson.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Speaker, all members of the, the committee, uh, Madam Speaker, um. Yeah, we did our presentation, and we just asked you for support for this legislation, and believe that, as you stated, there's nobody on the, uh, the pusher button to speak, so. Um, I guess we're ready to vote, Madam Speaker, yeah.
Going twice for any additional comments or questions online.
Speaker, this is Delegate James.
Ahdo konen, uh, Chair Vince James. What do, Chair Vince James, you have the floor.
Uh, heh, dan, Speaker, um, ahdo, presenters nohlenegi, yat eh, doh, sha elkha hasti, llo da, ah, nohtsho. Uh, kodoo, um, bahna adishkidohleh egi, di, um, dekui she, eh, eh, naltsos, chadinti. Ahdo, belanda eh isli, ahdo, naltsos, nlinegi, beda isni, sli, oh, oh ko. Oh ko, di, 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 kwa egi, na'ghah eh, 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 di, naltsos, nihi tahto, na, nohtsos, leh, oh. Oh ko, eh eh, ilat, italachat, eh yi eh, chidolisla, italachat, eh yi eh ya eh, um, ahdo lae. Um, neyihihna dohleh lan, so eh, eh, bahna adishkih, um, Speaker, thank you, deserved my time, audition.
Ahdo, kwa egi, uh, Chair Vince James, kodoo lahana deh kit, kodoo she, uh, Shana. Kodoo, uh, Honorable Chair Vince James. We did have a little static in your question, um, Honorable Simpson asked if you could restate your question. Honorable Vince James.
That's a ash, oh, di ta.
Oh, kadaho, ah, kodita, uh, just a reminder for our audience, uh, ashode, that is the, just keep your conversation to minimal. Uh, kodoo, Chair Vince James.
Um, thank you, Speaker, I think this is one of the reasons why, uh, last council, um, one of the reason of why we just kept our council meetings at the council chambers, is because it's hard to control, um, the audience, to keep the noise down. Um, and there's really no control, um, of, um, audience coming up to the presenters. And, and, and that's one of the reasons why, uh, we had all the meetings taking place at the council chambers. Another fine example for you, uh, Speaker, uh, my question, um, was pertaining to, uh, quite a bit of other similar, um, legislations, um, that have come before council. And, um, eh, eh, it will pass council, it has gone through, um, at this point. What is your expectation that this legislation will, will do? And you think it will do something, um, is, is my question. Um, how, how is this any, how is this legislation any different than all the previous legislations, similar legislations that have been passed? Uh, that's my question, thank you, Speaker.
Hashi heha kodoo Shiyaj, Honorable Chair Vince James. Ahdo kwa egi she, uh, Shana, Honorable Simpson.
Uh, keh, Madam Speaker, so, Honorable Delegate, um, Vince James, eh, kido, are, um, members of the committee. Si so, ibahadis seti deh. Where, ina, the pandemic, eh, keh covid, neh, itah sakoh. Ko, saying kisna na, katem, eh, before the pandemic hit, shadat eh. Ahro di kash, neh, eh, sk, shadat eh, heh, dan, neh, had, nihiyet, niitani. So, she, I said, basically, when just the committee goes to other areas of Navajo Nation, I would definitely support it. And at eh, neh, itah sah, doh, shadat eh, di da, 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 oh, songo. So di de, is ani, how similar legislation I pass, but eh, ahro di deh. Jo, is ani, bela leko, lakas. Every law has to have some limits. No, no legislation is perfect. Oh ko di di, eh, shti di kon, is ani, dokasatni, di deh. Di korek nahadah, si, doh, doh, Hansi, Ramona McGee, doh, ni deh, abdo, be deh, ni deh. Doh, Danny Simpson, doh, be deh, ni deh. Doh, Mr. Urban Chaz, be deh, ni deh. Doh, Justin Joe, be deh, ni deh. We have over a hundred people here. Ahadah, si, jo, Washington, doh, kosan deh. Di five miles, di, be shpasan, eh, da, da, sleneh, doh, deyosan deh. Ahre, jo, kubki na, di ka, dokas. Nihiyek deh, Buffer Zone, zero deh di, neh. Is it gonna help? It's an official statement from the Navajo Nation and. it's an official statement from the Navo Nation and the people jo na no kiya teh laa chiloh becomes official statement so how is it gonna help this will give us official state statement to speak on behalf of our Navo people here that are concerned about the buffer zone di deh ah but not see dingoi sheh yeti teh that's the first thing they use no buffers on the da neka neh hardest Navo Nation legislation hardest of those that's one thing they ask about where's your official statement from the Navo Nation kuna deh neh kalin dokas you heh zero buffers on the du danitsen noh daya da si so is ani bela lo anda kas amend eh so eh deh not eh we listen to the people to present this legislation zero zero seven six dash two three to our Navo people that are concerned of what's being proposed by the federal government from being a buffer zone or that which initially uh the honorable delegate Vince James eh you kitty eh daan chinna nishhto again like we said if everything was perfect with our legislation and Washington don't host tango I would not be before the NPA committee to amend what was approved by during twenty fourth council so eh deh uh I'm gonna just respond back to that Madam Speaker heh
oh heh ha kudo shana uh honorable Danny Simpson ah deh sa beha na henzi igi ah do kudoj uh doh la nahto lchida and just for the record we don't have reserved time in Nabi kiya teh so if you would like to have some more comments or questions uh feel free to ask the staff here or text the staff going once going twice for comments and questions
Speaker this is Delegate James
honorable Vince James
um thank you again Speaker and then thank you on shlan ash for the um response um in in regards to um your exhibits on on your on the legislations um you have exhibits chapter uh resolution as exhibits and in in those resolutions um is there a reason why there's there's certain resolutions that are not updated to correspond with the legislation uh that will be my question thank you
heh ha kudo uh sheyaj honorable Vince James kudo not deh kit kudo she uh honorable Simpson ah not dishat
uh heh ha Speaker the members of the committee here doh ah shek eh deh no sanga doh ah den eh so keh naa na di deh okay let's go to Pablo Toto February twenty twenty three it was approved eh deh ah kune na na White Horse Lake di deh I think there is be correction because this was passed in February twenty twenty three di deh di deh twenty two be ka ah kune uh Resolution Lake Valley February twelve eh ka signed it guy back in twenty twenty three eh deh ah kune na yizi it was certified February sixth twenty twenty three and when this di deh so there these resolutions were passed two months ago di deh and this whole eh deh by deh teh I'm not sure how update we want but these resolutions that were exhibits that are exhibits to this uh legislation eh or the resolution are current and will mostly will pass back in February da shlan ah heh
ah do kune heh ha kudo honorable Simpson for your responses jo ah deh toh la nahto lchida any more comments or question on legislation zero zero seven six dash two three first call
this is Delegate James again Speaker
honorable Chair Vince James
um uh uh thank you again and then da shlan ash thank you I'm just um looking at what was emailed to us and um for 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 instead your there's resolution from uh Richard McGee um that indicates on December eighteen two thousand nineteen um and then which is your exhibit C um and then when I when I look at the other documents which is exhibit D um from Hefno chapter um that uh resolution is from September two thousand nineteen to where uh the chapter president Ben Woody Junior didn't even sign the uh resolution um and then there's the uh Lake Valley uh chapter um it does still that one was approved October two thousand nineteen and so and then there's the na yizi um resolution um that's in in the email that was signed June uh June second two thousand nineteen um so um that's the reason why I'm I'm asking why is there no updated um resolutions uh chapter resolutions um and then um Pablo Pantato does have um two thousand July to July fifteen two thousand nineteen as well White Rock chapter um does have um October twenty first two thousand nineteen um and then there's a red Eastern Agency Council uh resolution and that one um does have December seventh uh two thousand nineteen and so those are the documents that are attached as exhibit to the current legislation and and that's why I'm asking why these uh um updated resolutions are not attached and thank you on speakers that will be my question again
heh ha kudo Chair Vince James refer those questions to the sponsor honorable Simpson
uh thank you Madam Speaker the members of the committee uh doh shek eh deh no sanga deh keh uh yat eh na keh dishne ah doh other honorable delegate Vince James eh notification and I heh di deh um clarification di deh is under first the one you're referencing those resolution twenty nineteen of a kai that was our first this was attached by let's say council di deh the Senate bill doh House bill of Kai di deh you of Kai eh deh exhibit one eh di those resolution when we compromise to say we willing to go five miles those are the resolution eh those are the one we're talking about that we are willing to compromise at five miles so that's attached to uh the Senate bill the House bill and the five miles that we are willing to compromise on jo eh auto outside of the eagle eh konda eh ka resolution that updated one eh eh ya ni teh for na yizi from Lake Valley from uh believe White Horse doh Pablo Toto eh the four ones that they want zero buffer zone the two thousand nineteen the other uh exhibit C by Yen K that was attachment to that we're willing to go with five mile buffer zone that were that's what was uh heh gachne that Senate bill eh YT D that's Senate bill uh ten seventy nine and uh House Bill twenty one eighty nine those were attachments eh deh to that we willing to compromise at five miles eh eighty the four resolution Z eh are updated twenty twenty three but Kai the last two months but not as eh that's what we're running with to say we do not we support zero buffer zone eh hotesh ashlan uh honorable delegate Vince James heh
heh ha kudo honorable Simpson the legislative sponsor for responding with those questions ah do kudo be shpa saanin itlinigi doh la nahto lchida
uh Delegate James here Speaker
honorable Vince James
um heh ha daan Speaker and then da shlan ash honorable Simpson so do we need to do an amendment to attach those updated resolutions to the legislation that be my question thank you
table
ah do kudo will refer those questions back to the our sponsor honorable Simpson
uh thank you Madam Speaker members of the the committee yat eh na keh you ah then doh ah den no sanga doh kaines okay na heh na keh dishi doh ah deh um brother Nate eh kiya honorable delegate Vince James uh Nate eh kiya I believe di deh exhibit two exhibit three exhibit four on page two let's look at page two di deh now on exhibit one eh it has the existing I mean what was approved by uh Nabi iya teh di deh you done daa sli eh ah eh what was attached to that exhibit one all the attachments eh the Senate bill the House bill and the compromise resolution five miles eh di exhibit one eh now the new resolution exhibit two that's uh the the current uh resolution Pablo Toto eh exhibit two our resolution White Horse White Horse Lake eh exhibit three the current uh resolution ah kune Lake Valley eh exhibit four eh is the current one February twelve eh di twenty three our current resolution na yizi eh exhibit five so the confusion right now is there's exhibit two three four five all have the current uh resolution from chapters exhibit one it was how it was presented as a legislation with all the attachments eh eight uh Nabi iya teh the twenty fourth council you done daa sli uh sh uh shlan uh uh brother uh honorable delegate Vince James eh deh so the exhibits are correct uh shlan ah thank you ah do amend oh you see by Yen K uh I don't see the word needs to be amended uh shlan ah di deh but if you think there's needs to be amendment uh I I I always support that shlan ah heh
heh ha honorable Simpson ah doh doh la nahto lchida colleagues online
this is Delegate James
honorable Vince James
um Speaker um the legislation that is emailed to us only goes up to exhibit E and then it has the um the um the tally count of of the votes I I don't see um the uh honorable um Simpson indicated exhibit two and then exhibit three and then down down the line those I I don't those are not attached to the legislations that were emailed to us so but if if um brother says that exhibits if the exhibits are are attached then I I will just go ahead and move forward with uh his trust that these exhibits are attached uh I do see all the other documents the five day comments uh documents as well um so we probably need an updated um um legislation to be emailed to to the twenty fifth Navo Nation Council uh thank you I have no further question and I support the legislation brother have honor thank you
but she heh ha ah deh uh Chair Vince James ah doh doh la nahto lchida honorable colleagues on Zoom telephone first call second call third call ah doh heh ha for your comments and questions colleagues I don't see any uh amendments or any more questions but those shee banned a dija uh vocal call for a vote staff could you help us with a roll call vote honorable Steven Arvizo
Green
honorable Steven Arvizo votes green honorable Lamardo Azaret honorable Lamardo Azaret did not vote honorable Helena Nez Bega honorable Helena Nez Bega honorable Helena Nez Bega votes green honorable Norman Bega honorable Norman Bega votes green honorable Shana Anne Claw is excused honorable Eugenia Charles Newton is excused honorable Amber Canasba Crotty honorable Amber Canasba Crotty honorable Amber Canasba Crotty did not vote honorable Herman M Daniels Junior honorable Herman M Daniels Junior votes green honorable Seth Damon is excused honorable Vince James honorable Vince James
yeah Delegate James votes green
honorable Vince James votes green honorable Brenda Jesus honorable Brenda Jesus votes green honorable Casey Allen Johnson is excused honorable Dr Andy Nez honorable Dr Andy Nez honorable Dr Andy Nez did not vote honorable Rick Nez honorable Rick Nez votes green honorable Nathan Nota
Green
honorable Nathan Nota votes green honorable Shandine Parrish honorable Shandine Parrish honorable Shandine Parrish votes green honorable Jermaine Simonson honorable Jermaine Simonson honorable Jermaine Simonson did not vote honorable Danny Simpson honorable Danny Simpson votes green honorable Carl Slater is excused honorable George Toll honorable George Toll honorable George Toll did not vote honorable George Toll votes green honorable Otto So is excused honorable Curtis Yanito votes green honorable Sherlyn Yaazi votes red going back up honorable Lamardo Azaret honorable Lamardo Azaret honorable Lamardo Azaret did not vote honorable Amber Canasba Crotty honorable Amber Canasba Crotty honorable Amber Canasba Crotty did not vote honorable Dr Andy Nez honorable Dr Andy Nez votes green
Lamardo votes green
honorable Jermaine Simonson honorable Jermaine Simonson honorable Jermaine Simonson did not vote honorable excuse me honorable Lamardo Azaret votes green Excuse me, honorable Lamardo Azaret votes green. Honorable Shauna, Shauna Anne Claw votes green. Madam Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, one opposed. Madam Speaker not voting. K'haat, k'haat, staff, we do have a vote of fifteen in favor, one opposed. Ado, Speaker not voting. Do k'haat, eh, uh, k'haat, na, k'it, sh'ni. We go down to, next on our agenda, eight. Close of meeting announcement adjournment. There's a motion to adjourn by Honorable Norman Be Gay. Second by. Second by Brenda Jesus, Honorable Chair Brenda Jesus. Colleagues, are there any questions or comments on adjournment? Uh, staff, could you help us with a roll call vote for adjournment? Honorable Stephen Arviso.
Green.
Honorable Stephen Arviso votes green. Honorable Lamardo Azaret. Honorable Lamardo Azaret.
Green.
Honorable Lamardo Azaret votes green. Honorable Helena Nez Be Gay. Honorable Helena Nez Be Gay. Honorable Helena Nez Be Gay did not vote. Oh, Honorable Helena Nez Be Gay votes green. Honorable Norman Be Gay. Honorable Norman Be Gay votes green. Honorable Shauna Anne Claw. Honorable Shauna Anne Claw. Honorable Shauna Anne Claw did not vote. Honorable Am- Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton is excused. Honorable Amber Canesba Crotty. Honorable Amber Canesba Crotty. Honorable Amber Canesba Crotty did not vote. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Junior. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Junior votes green. Honorable Seth Damon is excused. Honorable Vince James. Honorable.
Delegate James votes green.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Brenda Jesus. Honorable Brenda Jesus votes green. Honorable Casey Allen Johnson is excused. Honorable Dr. Andy Nez. Honorable Dr. Andy Nez votes green. Honorable Rick Nez. Honorable Rick Nez. Honorable Rick Nez did not vote. Honorable Nathan Nota.
Green.
Honorable Nathan Nota votes green. Honorable Shandine Parrish. Honorable Shandine Parrish votes green. Honorable Jermaine Simonson. Honorable Jermaine Simonson. Honorable Jermaine Simonson did not vote. Honorable Danny Simpson. Honorable Danny Simpson votes green. Honorable Carl Slater is excused. Honorable George Toll. Honorable George Toll votes green. Honorable Otto So is excused. Honorable Curtis Yanito. Honorable Curtis Yanito. Honorable Curtis Yanito votes green. Honorable Sherlin Yasi. Honorable Sherlin Yasi votes green, going back up. Honorable Shauna Anne Claw. Honorable Shauna Anne Claw. Honorable Shauna Anne Claw did not vote. Honorable Amber Canesba Crotty. Honorable Amber Canesba Crotty. Honorable Amber Canesba Crotty did not vote. Honorable Rick Nez. Honorable Rick Nez. Honorable Rick Nez did not vote. Honorable Jermaine Simonson. Honorable Jermaine Simonson. Honorable Jermaine Simonson did not vote. Speaker, with a vote of fourteen in favor, zero opposed, Madam Speaker not vote voting. Ado, k'haat, na na, staff, we do have a vote of fourteen in favor. Zero opposed and Speaker not voting on their adjournment. K'haat, eh, k'haat, na, k'it, sh'ni, k'haat, sh'ke, eh, n'ch'la, n'ch'la, so, ni, iki. Ado, eh, pa, da, k'haat, na, ni, tze. And our, my, one of our priorities as a Twenty-Fifth Navajo Nation, as Chair of N'abik'i ati, is to visit. Some of our communities, jo, k'haat, na, t'ani, buta ha, silza, la, da, dohno, eh, pinina. Kon, he, tata, di, kato, n'elto, eh, she, uh, n'juna, go, l'ch'ina, di, kato, eh, ya, ho, eh, to, le, l'elto. Ado, k'haat, o, eh, k'haat, na, k'it, sh'ni, k'haat, ch'iyon, da, la, gi. Uh, eh, kwa eki, eh. We will adjourn at one fifty-three PM.